One minute until we air. We are now streaming. Good evening, everyone. Welcome, welcome, welcome to City Hall. And we are getting the business started tonight. All right, we will, uh, we'll just, uh, hold for a moment of silence in honor of a yearning for peace around this world and in these streets. Thank you. All right, we'll now, uh, go to Councilmember Freeman for the, uh, Pledge of Allegiance.
It's our practice to stand to salute the flag, and if you join me, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Mayor Williams?
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Middleton?
I'm here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Caballero?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Present.
Councilmember Rist?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna do it at that podium right there. Thank you. There's one that's not numbered. Okay, she just organized those for me. This lady, I'm gonna read the proclamation first. So, uh, usually, and I want you to have your, uh, guests come up as well, just a moment. They can all come and stand in just a moment. Uh, usually, I read proclamations, uh, that's one of the roles of the mayor, to, um, celebrate, uh, proclaiming a particular attention to a day. Uh, but then again, sometimes, we get a chance to provide the highest honor of the city, and that is the key to our city. Uh, and this is our highest gift, our most honorable way of thanks for the service one has done, uh, in this community, the lives that have been impacted by their work, uh, their commitment to our community. And, uh, it is my honor tonight to provide a proclamation to Dr. Johnson O. Ekileye. And it reads as, whereas, Dr. Johnson O. Ekileye has served as the 12th Chancellor of North Carolina Central University, NCCU, since 2016, joined NCCU as Provost and Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs in 2016, and served as interim chancellor from December 2016 to June 2017. And whereas, Dr. Johnson O. Ekileye brought 37 years of dedicated service to higher education, transforming the lives of thousands of students, including senior administrative service in public, private, and church-affiliated institutions prior to coming to NCCU. And whereas, Dr. Ekileye earned a bachelor's degree in telecommunications and a master's degree in media technology from Alabama A&amp;M University, and a doctorate in human communication studies from Howard University. Whereas, Dr. Ekileye is well-known as a motivational speaker, consultant, writer, editor, and documentarian, and he is also active in civic, cultural, and church-related organizations, business advisory groups, while serving on the boards of Made in Durham RTP Foundation, the 50 Group, and the Watauga Club. And whereas, Dr. Ekileye's introduction of the Eagle Promise Initiative has begun, become the cornerstone of the university's strategic priorities. Under Dr. Ekileye's leadership, the university has increased its enrollment to over 8,200 students in undergraduate, graduate, and professional programs. Dr. Ekileye has led the largest infrastructure expansion at the university to date, with capital projects valued over $400 million, including a new student center, a new school of business, three new residence halls, and a 24/7 collaborative learning and research center. Additionally, Ekileye was instrumental in securing approval for NCCU's millennial campus designation in October 2018. And whereas, Dr. Johnson O. Ekileye's commitment and dedication to higher education will serve as a legacy and roadmap for others. Now, therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, proclaim May 6th as Dr. Johnson O. Ekileye Day. I, uh, in just a quick, quick story, I, I keep telling this story. When I met Doc, I call him Doc, but Dr. Ekileye, um, it was actually when he was first introduced to the, uh, to the Alumni Association. And I went to this meeting, and many of you all know, I am a band head. I was in the marching band, I was drum major, and all I cared about was my marching band. And at the time, I knew we needed more funding for the marching band. I didn't really care about how the institution worked. And so when I met him, I was like, hey, so what are you gonna do about the band? He said, oh, well, we have a lot of things to take care of, you know, we're gonna get to it. And all I could hear was, he said, we're gonna get to it. So I went back and forth with him, and he went back and forth with me, and he said, let's step outside. Now, the way I grew up, when someone says, let's step outside, it has a certain indication. He didn't mean that, but, you know, cultural differences. However, I obliged, and I went outside, I was ready. And, uh, he explained to me, he said, listen, we're gonna get to it, but we have some troubling things we have to address right now. And, uh, and I just, you know, I never knew how big of the, the world it was in our institution as a double eagle of NCCU, but that was the day that his passion was defined for me. And I've been supportive of, of Doc ever since, and just really appreciate all of what you've done, uh, for not only Central, NCCU, but the Durham community, and as well as nationally and globally.
To the Honorable Mayor Williams, esteemed council members, all of the alumni on the council, and for the City of Durham, and of course, to the wonderful people of Durham, good evening. And I'm so glad that the mayor clarified the stepping outside thing, because I thought he was expecting me to fight him outside. But what I was trying to do is really to explain to him, let's talk about this a little bit outside, so that we wouldn't disrupt the other meetings. I am, Mr. Mayor, I am deeply moved and honored to receive the key to the city this evening. This moment holds a significance that transcends words, particularly as I reflect on my journey as Chancellor of North Carolina Central University. I am truly grateful for the privilege of being a part of the fabric of Durham, North Carolina, a city that I have come to love dearly. Throughout my tenure as Chancellor, I have witnessed firsthand the extraordinary spirit and the pride of this city. It has been my greatest honor to contribute to the rich history and success of the city. NCCU, as you well know, holds a very special place in the history of Durham and the state of North Carolina, as it was founded in 1910 and later became the first state-supported liberal arts college in the nation, not just in, in, in North Carolina. Our university has been a beacon of hope and opportunity, empowering generations of students to achieve their dreams and change the course of history in every field of human endeavor. Moreover, NCCU stands at the heart of a global innovation center nestled with North Carolina's largest continuously running the research triangle path. Together with the City of Durham, we have led the way in pioneering initiatives that drive innovation, foster entrepreneurship, and shape the future of our city and beyond. As I accept this key, Mr. Mayor, I do so with a profound sense of appreciation for the trust and the support bestowed upon me by this city and its cherished residents. I am deeply humbled by this honor and pledge to continue championing the values of education, innovation, and service long into my retirement. With profound humility, I accept this key, recognizing that it symbolizes not only my efforts, but the collective dedication of NCCU to the growth and the prosperity of the City of Durham. I would be remiss if I did not express my deepest gratitude to those who have supported me throughout my tenure, particularly my wife, Monita, and my children, and more importantly, my colleagues who are here behind me, our Vice Chancellors for Student Affairs, our leadership team, who have equally worked very hard to make sure that we can fulfill the dreams of the Durham resident. And of course, finally, to the leaders and the citizens of Durham, my gratitude knows no bound. It has been the highest honor and privilege to serve alongside all of you, and I eagerly anticipate bearing witness to the continued growth and triumphs of this remarkable city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this honor. Thank you.
I had to make an Aggie stand up here with me while we did that, by the way.
I know, you have some Aggies here as well.
That was my first key to the city. All right. Congrats to NCCU. Dr. Ekileye is retiring, in case I didn't state that. He's, uh, served his time well, and he's now retiring from NCCU, and will, uh, move on to other things. Councilmember Rist?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, City Manager Page, good evening, citizens of Durham also, good evening. I'd like to call up Jennifer, come on, from New Hope Bird Alliance. Um, so as Jennifer's coming up, I just wanna say, Mr. Mayor, as you know, when this, when this, um, proclamation came through, I was eager to, to be the one to read this. I should say that, um, I have a somewhat complicated, actually, this came from, from, this from the New Hope, what used to be called New Hope Audubon Society, just recently rebranded, right, as, as of a week, as the New Hope Bird Alliance. I was excited about this, but I have a somewhat complicated relationship with birds, you see. So my parents and my grandparents were all big members of the Audubon Society, organizers, volunteers, spent a lot of time, you know, involved in the Audubon Society. So I spent a lot of time as a kid going on bird walks, that were not always a thing I wanted to do as a rowdy kid, you know? But as an adult, I've really come to love the, the, the time we spent together and what I learned about birds, and I really gained a deep appreciation as an adult for birds. So I wanna thank you all at New Hope Bird Alliance for bringing this resolution forward and for bringing back these fond memories of going on bird hikes with my parents. So thank you. So, um, whereas, the term aerial insectivores refers to species of birds that eat insects while on the wing, including swifts, swallows, nightjars, and flycatchers. And whereas, studies have shown that certain species of aerial insectivores have declined by more than 13% since 2012 and are projected to decline further. And whereas, studies have shown that aerial insectivores, such as chimney swifts, consume as many as 5,000 insects per bird per day, including mosquitoes and flies. And whereas, aerial insectivores inhabit all areas of the City of Durham. And whereas, many aerial insectivores live in colonies that many, that may, uh, I'm sorry, live in colonies, and many remain active in the evening after working hours, enhancing the appeal and ease of, of observing them. And whereas, social events for viewing aerial insectivores have attracted viewers to local commercial establishments for viewing events and could benefit even more local businesses, if better known. And whereas, viewing nature has been shown to reduce stress and promote health. And whereas, knowledge of specific practices for conserving and protecting the populations of aerial insectivores would benefit from the designation of the Year of the Aerial Insectivore. Now, therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, to hereby proclaim 2024 Year of the Insectivore in the City of Durham, and hereby urge and encourage use of the best practices for conserving aerial insectivores in Durham. The document that New Hope, New Hope Bird Alliance has submitted to the Durham County, Durham City-County Planning Department. Witness my hand in the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this first day of March 2024. Leonardo Williams, Mayor, City of Durham.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, thank you, council members, and thank you, Councilmember Rist, for pronouncing that mouthful, aerial insectivore. I thought about saying AI, but that would be confusing. It's also confusing that some of these birds are called swift, but not that swift. But I, if I have a couple of minutes to say a few words about why these birds need to be protected, how do they, how they can be protected, but most of all, how they will benefit the citizens of Durham. So, connecting to nature is a, a way to maintain mental health, and these are birds that live in man-made structures. So you'll see them going into chimneys on Parrish Street, on Watts Street. You'll see them flying above the city, you'll see them behind Patterson Place, big box stores out in the middle of a field, uh, living in purple martin houses. And, uh, they are consuming insects, the best practices for encouraging them can save you money. So one of them is to please turn out unnecessary lights at night. The city could save electricity, uh, individuals could save electricity, and the birds would not be confused. Tonight, for example, as many as 50,000 birds may fly over this area on their migration path, and lights, especially those that beam up, confuse them and get, you know, cause problems with their migration. Another way to save money and save the birds is to abandon spraying for mosquitoes. It doesn't work, and it's very expensive. There are much less expensive ways of dealing with them, and you are killing the very things that these birds eat, as well as possibly harming yourself, because there's no safe natural insecticide, um, and people don't realize that. A third way, maybe not to save you money, but, um, bring you some cheap entertainment, is to uncap chimneys. These birds, especially chimney swifts, live in chimneys. I have them living in my chimney. It's very entertaining, you can hear them come down, the little birds beg. The nest itself is a couple of twigs glued on with bird saliva, sounds yucky, but dries up, and that disappears, uh, by the time you're ready to start, start a fire in your chimney. So these are all ways of, of thinking about bringing support to birds that actually support humans. And that's what I have to say. If there are any questions, happy to answer them.
So I, I try to spread out the, um, try to spread out the proclamations as best as possible, but sometimes, uh, I do take the liberty and luxury as mayor when it's personal, and, uh, wanted to present this one myself, uh, simply because I, I know of, you know, just, I can never know what it's like to be in your shoes, or any of your shoes. Um, however, I, just for the public, quickly, whenever there is, whenever there's a, there's a homicide on the streets of Durham, this council gets a text message, the entire council, every single time, and we get all the details, as, as much as we can get. And we're getting a text message. We're getting a text message. The people standing behind me see the bodies on the ground. We get a text message, they get the body on the ground. They have to investigate why that body was on the ground. Sometimes, the bullets that put that body on the ground are sometimes flying at them. And when we're running to take cover, they're running to apprehend the situation. Never let us take for granted this particular role, ever. I don't care what your stance is, I don't care what research you read, article you've presented, at the end of the day, we have dedicated people in our city that put their lives on the line for a job to keep us safe. And I never want us to take that for granted. So I will always stand tall, and I may not be able to do your job, but my job is policy, and I'll always be on the front line for you, and I would take those jabs any day, for any of you. Some promises I tell people not to make, because they may not be able to keep them. But I can bet you for sure, I'll always keep this one. Now, to your proclamation. Whereas, the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the officers of this City of Durham, the City of Durham Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedom of the citizens of Durham. And whereas, it is important that our citizens are aware of and understand the dangers and problems encountered, and the duties and responsibilities incurred by their law enforcement officers. And whereas, it is equally important that our law enforcer, enforcement officers recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas, the men and women of the City of Durham Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now, therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through 18th, 2024, as Police Week, and May 15th, 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Durham, and call upon our citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present, who have rendered a dedicated service to their community. I also encourage our citizens to honor those peace officers who have lost their lives or have become disabled in the line of duty. So witness my hand in the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this sixth day of May 2024.
Wow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, my Durham City Council, Manager Page, um, and the community of Durham and leaders here that we have, and, um, wow, usually I'm able to pull myself together, that was tough. So next week, law enforcement officers from across our great nation will gather to honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their communities. We have recently been reminded of the dangers that our officers face each day, and the profound impact that their service has on our entire community. As we remember their loss, it is also important that we honor their courage, their selflessness, and their commitment to justice. In this moment and beyond, I challenge each of you to renew your commitment to supporting those who continue to serve, for it is in them that the legacy of the fallen lives on. Our profession is a noble calling. I have zero regrets. It is true, we all know the risks, we all know that at any moment, anytime, that we could be the ones that fall. And yet, through it all, the tragedy, the long hours, the occasional vitriol, we persevere. We are resilient. We draw strength from those that came before us and from those that were lost far too soon. We draw strength from those that came before us and from those that were lost far too soon. I want to just take a moment to remember those officers that were killed last week, officers that have faced violence in our country. And I want to just extend a prayer to one of our own that's still currently hospitalized, Officer Breann Jones. On behalf of the men and women of the Durham Police Department, I want to thank you all for your continued support and for this wonderful well-meaning and the words in this proclamation. So thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Can Eric Note come up? This is for Drinking Water Week. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of all living things. And whereas only tap water provides public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. Whereas the city delivers a reliable supply of high-quality, award-winning drinking water. Whereas the city continues to be a leader in source water protection and recognizes the potential impacts of climate change on this precious natural resource. And whereas dedicated individuals and organizations have made significant contributions in developing, operating, and maintaining our water infrastructure and educating the public on the value of this resource. Now therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2024, as Drinking Water Week. In Durham and hereby urge all residents to celebrate our staff that produces, manages, and maintains the city's water resources and to help make Durham a more sustainable community by embracing water-wise habits. Witness my hand in the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this the sixth day of May, 2024. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Williams, members of the City Council, and citizens of Durham. I am Eric Note, plant operator at the Williams Water Treatment Plant. It is an honor to be here today to accept this proclamation on behalf of my fellow operators in water supply and treatment and all employees of Durham's Department of Water Management. Our team works 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to ensure that every one of our customers has access to one of the most basic human needs, clean and safe drinking water. It takes teamwork and dedication from our 380-plus person department to fulfill that mission. Everyone from operators to maintenance technicians, engineers, and laboratory and water efficiency analysts all play key roles in making sure our award-winning Durham Water flows to your tap. If you think about a typical day, everyone in Durham, and that's more than 320,000 people, wakes up, takes a shower, brushes their teeth, uses the toilet, and maybe brews some coffee. That means by 8:00 AM every day, our team has served pretty much the entire population of Durham three to four times. That's more than a million customer touchpoints every morning. Providing service like this requires an amazing team, and we have one. Part of our responsibility to ensure our water supply is safe and reliable is to educate the next generation about the importance of drinking water. Each year, our water efficiency team sponsors a poster contest that highlights the value of water. This year's theme was Be a Water Wizard. We received more than 300 entries, and that made judging very difficult. Our nine finalists, you can see their creations on the screens, maybe, went on to win eight of the nine top spots at the state competition. We will be announcing the winners on social media later tonight. I would like to thank you all for taking time to recognize the vital role safe drinking water plays in all of our lives. We appreciate the support of the City Council, the City Administration, fellow city employees, and of course, the residents of Durham who make this community such a great city. Thank you all.
Who's your friend there? Wane Drop?
Wayne Drop. He's why I ran, ladies and gentlemen. It is my honor, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this great privilege to read this proclamation. To my honorable colleagues, everyone in the chamber, good evening. I have the great honor of reading a proclamation for National Panhellenic Council of Durham and Orange County Days. And I'm going to invite Truett O'Neal to stroll up here. And anyone else you may want to join, you? Chapter Presidents? Yeah, you come up first. Little. We will. Yes, sir, yes, sir. Come on up. Do we need to put on Wipe Me Down, get you all up here faster? Come on. I'm pleased to be joined by the mayor and our city manager, Wanda Page, who both have their own affiliations. Proclamation. Where? Yes, sir. Shows. Whereas the National Panhellenic Council of Durham and Orange Counties, NPHC DO, has been an integral part of the community for over 40 years and was officially chartered on March 26th, 2022. And whereas the NPHC of Durham and Orange Counties has demonstrated a steadfast commitment to advancing educational opportunities, promoting voter education, and supporting local public schools. And whereas the council has played a crucial role in fostering social engagement and building fellowship among the members of the Divine Nine, which include Alpha Phi Alpha, Alpha Kappa Alpha, Kappa Alpha Psi, Omega Psi Phi, Delta Sigma Theta, Phi Beta Sigma, Zeta Phi Beta, Sigma Gamma Row, and Iota Phi Theta. And whereas the National Panhellenic Council was formed on May 10th, 1930, at Howard University and later incorporated in 1937, establishing a legacy of unity and collective action among its member organizations. And whereas the NPHC promotes community awareness and action through educational, economic, and cultural service activities, adhering to its mission of unanimity of thought and action in addressing problems of mutual interest to its member organizations. Now therefore, I, Leonardo Williams, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 10th, 2024, as National Panhellenic Council of Durham and Orange Counties Day in Durham and hereby urge all its residents to take note of this observance. Witness my hand in the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this the sixth day of May, 2024, Leonardo Williams, Mayor.
Sorry, everywhere I go, I'm a little taller than the microphone. Good evening, esteemed members of the Durham City Council, Mayor Williams, Pro Tem, community leaders, citizens, and members of the Divine Nine. Once again, my name is Truett O'Neal. I'm a proud alumnus of North Carolina Central University and a member of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. And I'm honored to be here to speak on behalf of the National Panhellenic Council of Durham and Orange Counties. As the president of the council, I'm proud to represent these individuals and their organizations behind me. This year, as a collective body, we are proud to commemorate the 94 years of the International Organization and more than 40-plus years of dedicated service to the city of Durham. Our steadfast commitment to our foundational pillars of scholarship, service, leadership development, civic engagement, brotherhood, sisterhood, and cultural heritage drives our mission positively to impact our community. During the COVID-19 pandemic, our D9 member of organizations rallied to support our schools. We embodied the pillar of service by actively participating in community initiatives like Mrs. Parker's Professor's Food Raiser led by NCCU alumni DPS Lakewood Elementary Media Specialist Turquoise Lujun Parker. We provided labor, volunteers, and monetary donations to the initiative, ensuring that students receive the essential meals they needed during school closures. Our efforts extended beyond Lakewood, reaching other schools and underscoring our deep commitment to educational support across Durham Public Schools. In addition to educational support, our council actively engages in initiatives that provide direct aid to families during critical times. Our Thanksgiving giveaway is one such initiative where we support DPS families, providing funds to enhance their Thanksgiving holiday meals. Now, the scope of engagement has significantly grown over the years, initially focusing on our annual Christmas toy giveaway and our NPHC DO cookout. We have expanded to include a broad range of community engagement opportunities. The Ujama Project spearheaded by NPHC DO's Iota Phi Theta Council Member KG supports Black-owned businesses by hosting our community and social events at Black-owned businesses, including Mike D's Barbecue, Anissa Spot, Missy Lane's, Favor Desserts, Burka Soul, and more. This strategic choice supports the local economy and lines with our organizational goals, allowing us to make a broad impact with unified efforts. As for political engagements, another pillar of our work over the last four years, we've hosted numerous forums, including the Durham Votes, Candidates Mix and Mingle, which provides a platform for meaningful interactions between the community and political candidates. And as a sitting council member sitting here this evening, we appreciate all of you for making time to meet our members and the community during these events. As we look to the future, please know that the initiatives mentioned tonight are just a few of the many projects the NPHC DO will continue to support and create. We look forward to many more years of providing additional opportunities to serve and activate community members in Durham, creating a positive impact. Thank you for recognizing our efforts. It is your support that helps amplify our impact and together, we can achieve remarkable things for the community of Durham. Thank you.
All right. Colleagues, we're gonna go ahead and get to it, get to the business. But I do want to recognize one more thing. It's not a certain, we're not reading any more proclamations tonight. But we do have some special guests in the room. And Derek, you'll get it right better than me. Do you mind just acknowledging our guest tonight, please? It's been an honor having them here for the last two weeks. And we spent a little time together right before the meeting started tonight.
Yes, so we have Derek Stanfield, specialist in the mayor. We have a group of students from 12 countries that are visiting the Duke Sanford School of Public Policy. They're LDF fellows. So if you could join me in standing up as we acknowledge them, all coming from the Middle East.
Thank you all so much for joining us tonight. And as I said earlier, stay as long as you can. But it's an honor to have you all. And as he said, they're from 12 different countries. And I just want to take a moment to say that some of them are experiencing things that we would never, ever even could imagine in our life, you know? And they're here spending time with us tonight. And I just want to honor that and thank you all. All right. Well, we will now move to priority items. Actually, announcements by council, I'm sorry. I'll start down here. Councilmember Cook.
All right, good evening. Thanks so much, everyone, for being here. I have quite a lot sitting heavy on my heart tonight. I'm just going to talk about a couple of things. I think that my colleagues are probably going to speak to some of the other ones that are resting on us all, I'm sure, that have been occurring over the last three weeks since we've had another of these meetings. The first thing I want to say is that I was really honored to be invited to the NCCU graduation this past weekend. And Dr. Akinley definitely stole some of my thunder, things that I was going to say about how awesome NCCU is. Right here in Durham, we have what was the very first national, in the nation, state-supported liberal arts college for Black folks. It's just an amazing history and graduation was so incredible. I was really blown away. There was a student that was honored for receiving a prestigious scholarship to study Portuguese at Columbia next year. The student body president was moved to tears when she was talking about her senior class. So it was really an honor to be there and I was really grateful for that opportunity. Meanwhile, down the road, Meanwhile, down the road, at my alma mater, UNC, things were looking a little bit different over the past couple weeks. There was, like many other universities across the nation, an encampment in support of a ceasefire that was seated on Polk Place, the scene of a lot of historical movements in the past led by students. Without much warning, the chancellor called in police from university, UNC affiliate universities, and our students were removed. They were pepper sprayed, many of them were arrested. This is, it's a really, it's a really difficult thing to watch your own alma mater do things that feel so counter to what you thought was what the school stood for. Several of our colleagues at Chapel Hill have condemned that action by the chancellor, and I wanted to quote what they said. This was from city council members in Chapel Hill, that "The reaction created an environment that inevitably resulted in an escalation of force." And I want to associate myself with those comments. Previously, we've seen actions over the decades led by students, and at UNC, what we have often seen is our administration coming out to meet the students where they're at, to listen to their demands, and to give them warnings so that they can choose if they would like to participate in civil disobedience. And in the past, several students have chosen to do that, right? But many also have left, and that was not the situation that we saw last week. We instead saw no warning and folks pepper sprayed and rounded up in something that I saw as an escalation of force, and I think that was the study reporting that came out of the campus at that time. Something that's particularly heavy to me is that antisemitism has been used as a justification for these reactions. We hear a lot about Jew safety, particularly today on Holocaust Remembrance Day. And as a Jew, this is really, really difficult for me because it feels like we are being used again and again to justify actions. You've heard me say it, and I will say it again and again, but criticizing a genocide is not antisemitic. It is, in fact, at the core of what Judaism stands for. So today, we are watching a silence of press and a simultaneous invasion into the last safe haven in Gaza, Rafa, a place that is now hosting one of the densest populations of the world, over a million people, at least. We don't really know how many folks are there because people are having to live in encampments without basic resources and without food. And even despite all of these horrific things, the reactions to our students standing up has been dismissive. And so I just want to state today that students, and particularly Jewish students who have been parts of these encampments, whose role in this movement has been largely ignored, we see you, we support you, I support you. I'm so humbled by the students who see the treatment that they're getting both by the press and our nation's leaders and worldwide, and they continue to stand up for a ceasefire and for just causes. I think we have a lot to learn from students. I'm still learning from the young people. I'm so impressed, and I just hope that we can really look to their leadership and join them in imagining a world that is better than this one that we are currently inhabiting. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Cook, for your words. They were very powerful, and I want to associate myself with them. Additionally, along with all of that news last week, the General Assembly, the Senate and the General Assembly passed an anti-immigrant bill, House Bill 10. Governor Cooper has vetoed it twice before. It is expected, the language is different than what the House has already passed in the General Assembly, so it's gonna go to crossover and it's expected to pass this coming Wednesday. The expectation is that Governor Cooper will veto it again, but because of current configuration in the General Assembly where there is a Republican supermajority, there is an expectation that it will pass. I just want to read a little bit about what this bill entails and what it will mean for our immigrant community here in Durham, and quite frankly, for our law enforcement, because it is going to change that dynamic significantly and actually put all of us at risk because of it. So the bill would require sheriffs to honor ICE, Immigration and Customs Enforcement requests to detain for at least 48 hours individuals suspected of being in the country illegally, if you are detained for some other reason and you're brought into jail. Local prisons would foot the bill for the processing and housing of detainees while federal officials review the immigration status. All counties would be required to share detention databases and attempt to find out the immigration status of any person in the local jail. So currently, and I do want to thank our current sheriff, this is not our current sheriff's practice, it has not been his practice, it's actually one of the reasons he ran and won when he did in 2018. And the reason that it is imperative that sheriff and local control are allowed to decide whether they are gonna cooperate with ICE is because it affects everyone's public safety. If there are members in your community who are not going to call or interact with law enforcement because of their own fear around their immigration status, everyone is in jeopardy. We know it affects women significantly, especially in domestic violence situations, because if there is a domestic violence situation in that home, they are more likely to not call police because if you know that potentially your primary breadwinner is going to be detained and put in jail and then deported, you're not gonna call the cops. It's just what it is. Additionally, in North Carolina, we do not have an immigration detention facility. So if you are detained in North Carolina, and let's be clear, they can detain you, and they're still gonna check your immigration status regardless of whatever your status may or may not be, because they have that right. In North Carolina, if you are on ICE hold and they come collect you, you are gonna end up in Georgia, if you're a man, at Stewart Detention Facility, and there's a facility in South Carolina for women. I have been to that facility. It is in the middle of nowhere. It is at least a 10-hour drive, is extremely isolated, it's south of Atlanta, and if you are charged with something here, the chances of a prosecution team trying to extract you for something while you've been put into federal custody is very small. So on top of it, it means that you're not really getting due process in your own community because you have been taken by ICE. That facility is full of what is mostly very young men, if they're 18, who have tried to cross the border, often fleeing really horrific circumstances at home, in their own home countries. And I'll always say, this is actually connected back to what we see in the Middle East, because our country for the last several decades has decided to be the major exporter of global violence and guns and arms. That's what we export to the rest of the world, and that then plays out in all of these global conflicts, and folks have horrific things happening in their communities, and so then they flee and often end up on our border. So if we want to stop, which I often hear, "Well, we don't want folks coming here." If we actually want to stop that cycle, it takes the US stopping its current foreign policy practices, especially in places like Central America that have wreaked havoc for generations, so that the stem of people fleeing violence to our own borders will stop. It will not stop until we change our foreign policies, and we are the people who ultimately determine that, as voters. So in November, I urge all of you, every election matters. Your council matters, your county commissioners matter, your sheriff matters, your general assembly members matter. If you want a different world, this is one way to get a different world. Vote for people who actually believe in the humanity of others, who actually believe that all life is dignified. So I sit on Governor Cooper's Hispanic and Latino Advisory Council. We are putting out a statement, and one of our asks is going to be for electeds across the state to sign on against HB 10. I will say, it's very disheartening that these bills just keep coming back and keep coming back. This is round three. I've been going to the General Assembly on and off since 2018 to help stop a bill like this. Latino activists, immigrant activists have expended a lot of time and energy fighting against bills like these, and yet here we are. So it is a sad day for North Carolina. It's a sad day that we have legislators who would rather waste time instead of ensuring that the quality of life for North Carolina residents that we all pay taxes to, instead of actually improving our quality of life. They are hell-bent on causing more violence and more harm in our communities and making us more unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And just, I hope everyone heard another reason why we need to vote. It is literally serious, life or death. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I want to wholeheartedly say I sign on to the request for HB 10 to be removed. I want to appreciate Councilmember Caballero's steadfastness around immigrants, and it's not just limited to Hispanics, it's also Haitian and other African countries. The unsaid piece of this is that race and racism is at the base, and keeping and honoring whiteness keeps this moving forward on a consistent basis. And if you don't understand that, I need you to grasp that, especially in this year, in this cycle with this election coming forward, because we're losing. And it's not just voting, it's actually having people of actual humanity running for office. And so I want to encourage you not just to vote, but to also consider what you could be doing to serve in our community, whether it's locally, statewide, or nationally, because it's just not, we're at a deficit on this side, and I know we need more people to honor our values, honor our values. I did want to just say that I also appreciate Councilmember Cook just highlighting the Holocaust Remembrance Day strikes a different chord, just looking at the death toll rise and knowing that there are women and children suffering in the middle of this so-called war. And I'm gonna leave it at that, but I just want to say, on a lighter note, I see some of the folks in the community, in the audience, who do some of this work locally to try and support our families and our children, and I want to say thank you for being here, and I want to also say that I hope that we continue to find ways to support you and the work that you're doing, however that needs to be. I hope it's a proposal that comes forward to council or a proposal that comes forward to city manager, however that looks. I look forward to supporting that. And then I also wanted to note, I really do appreciate the art competition for the water that is really an inspiring show of talent. And I noted that even though we're not announcing the competition winners, that a number of them were for Voyager Academy, and I know that there are many artists there that are untouted, so I want to make sure I send a big shout out to those, all the artists that submitted, everyone who submitted, the 300-and-some-eyed students who decided to put their talents to work for the city of Durham and send that submission in. And then I, I mean, it's a long evening of announcements and proclamations. I do have to just say, as an Eagle, that I want to thank Dr. Akalehi for his time and commitment to North Carolina Central. I want to congratulate all the graduates who graduated this Saturday and walked across the stage, and I want to also just kind of send out a whole happy May, it's that season of graduations, and a congratulations to all the graduates who will be graduating this year. This is definitely a great season in that regard, and I'll also add an early Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers and stepmoms and all the birthing women of the world who provide us with the chance to be these humans on this earth, so. And then lastly, I will share that I did have the opportunity to attend Dr. Pasco Mbanga's retirement celebration, and I do want to highlight that his work and his commitment to the students of this city and county are not missed on me, and just know that his talents will be missed, and so I hope that he'll continue to provide some oversight and support in other ways for the city and county of Durham, and I look forward to reading his book. I also had a chance to support a local nonprofit who is now doing a food market for Old East Durham on Driver Street. Their grand opening for the Communities in Partnership, Black and Latino, or Latinx farmers bringing their actual items to market, and so I want to make sure that you are all aware and can support as well. And I want to make sure I send a special appreciation to Executive Director Otis and Tanisha here this evening for the invitation to their youth house, and I hope that we get to hear more about it, and I look forward to being supportive of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Riff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna put on my Book Harvest hat, and I'll start on a lighter note. So I wanted to thank Dr. Alfred at Merrick Moore Elementary and the staff at Book Harvest for inviting me out this morning to witness the Books on Break program organized by Book Harvest. So every student in Merrick Moore Elementary today got 10 books that they could select and take home and keep forever. The whole idea is about giving kids a chance to practice reading over the summer. Last year, Book Harvest provided over 14,000 students in 35 public elementary schools and childcare centers with over 70,000 books. That was just for last summer. So I just wanted to thank Book Harvest for the amazing work and encourage my colleagues, if you have the opportunity, to participate in similar Books on Break events taking place this month. It is so much fun. These kids are so excited, and it's just palpable how they like run up and grab books. It's so much fun, so I encourage you to do that. So on a more somber note, I wanted to note that I took part in the monthly meeting last week of the Trinity Park Neighborhood Association. This is the neighborhood where I live in. Like many neighborhoods across the city, Trinity Park neighbors are concerned about the uptick in shootings lately. On the agenda of the meeting was a discussion about the homicide that took place not this weekend, but the weekend before at the corner of Main and Morgan Streets. That's the second homicide in that location since last October. This is tragic, regrettable, and a great loss to the families involved into our community. The president of the Neighborhood Association will be reaching out to the city manager, Ms. Page, to request a meeting to discuss the city's response, and I just want to thank the city manager in advance for making that request a priority. So thank you very much. Third, I was absolutely crushed to hear over the weekend that two pedestrian accidents occurred in our city, one fatal. I know we're investing millions of dollars in our sidewalk repair and construction. We've got some of that on our agenda tonight, right? And we're also considering a bond issue this fall to invest even more, but these investments cannot come soon enough to keep residents safe and actually achieve our Vision Zero goals. So I want to ask all of us to recommit to our Vision Zero goals, that no one, whether pedestrians or bicyclists or drivers of cars, will die in Durham from accidents on our streets. So I encourage us to recommit to that and invest as much as we can, as quickly as we can, to make sure all residents are safe on our streets. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to my honorable colleagues for the excellent remarks and announcements tonight. First off, Mr. Mayor, congratulations on your first key to the city. The city once gave me the key, but they took it back because I kept going to Walmart and making copies. I'm sure that won't be a problem with Dr. Akalehi, I'm sure. I want to send a shout out to Urban Ministries of Durham, who had a wonderful celebration a couple of weeks ago for 40 years of service in our community. They had a wonderful event, their Empty Bowls Gala. Mayor was there too, so he may shout them out, so I'm sorry if I stole your thunder on that. I had to eat and run. I also want to shout out to Durham Center for Senior Life, who had their 75th anniversary gala. If you've never been to a senior party in Durham, whether it's a holiday party or a party at the senior center, you have not been to a party. They had a wonderful time. I want to thank the leadership there and Quaylen Murphy from ABC 11 for sharing co-hosting on that evening, had a wonderful evening of fellowship. When you hit-- When you hit 55, you're eligible to go and participate in the activities at the Senior Center for Life, Senior Life Center here in Durham. I hope that that's the goal for every resident of this city. No matter where you are in your life now, at some point, I hope you will consider availing yourself with the wonderful services and atmosphere there at the Durham Center for Senior Life. So I want to congratulate them on 75 years. I want to continue to send out prayers and best wishes to Officer Breann Jones, who was alluded to earlier this evening, as she continues to recover after injuries received in the line of duty. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that wonderful proclamation to Chief Andrews earlier. I want to send a special thanks to you, my colleagues on the dais, and to the staff. This is my first meeting, a full meeting of the council, since assuming the presidency of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. I cannot tell you what it meant to me, colleagues. First off, those of you who could not make it, who sent well wishes and congratulatory messages, and those of you who came to Winston-Salem to celebrate with me, my swearing-in staff, you, Madam Manager, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cook, and Councilmember Caballero for being there, Attorney Rayburg, City Clerk Schreiber, Assistant City Manager and Chief of Staff, Camisha Wallace, to our Communications Director, Bertha Beverly, pardon me. I want to thank you all so much for being there. I cannot tell you what it meant to me. I'm excited because this is the first time in many, many, many years that a big city has held the gavel of the league. Now, I'm fully mindful that my responsibility is to further the agenda and the concerns of the millions of people that the league represents, but I do plan on doing it in Durham, the Durham way. Durham is perhaps the most welcoming and affirming city in our state, and I want to use that energy here that we have in Durham to eviscerate that notion that there's a divide between urban and rural, that we can't come together on an agenda, as we've been doing with the league for over 80 years, an agenda that services all, no matter whether you live in a hamlet, a small town, a village, or one of our major cities. Somebody once said that we have the same problems, it's the number of zeros in our population, but we face the same problems. So colleagues, thank you so much for your well wishes and for your support as I take on this new role, repping for Durham, even though I'll be working for the state. Finally, thank you so much. Thank you. Finally, I want to dovetail on Councilmember Riss's comments about the gunfire in our city, which continues. There are folk who live in communities in this city who have been dealing with it for decades, every night hear gunfire, who have lost family members over the years continuously, sometimes in the same family. There is no zip code, there is no area of your city, there is no census tract that will insulate you from gunfire. So I want to just recommit tonight that as we focus on all of the important things that claim our attention as a council, that we continue to keep this issue at the forefront. Durham is dope, and all of the stuff that they say about Durham is true, but we will always have an asterisk next to our celebration, as long as two miles from our city center, our young people are jumping in bathtubs at night when it's not bath time because they're ducking and covering gunfire. It's got to be a priority for us. We've got to throw everything we have at it that comports with our values. And I hope for the residents of Trinity Park and for the residents of McDougal Terrace and Oxford Manor and Cornwallis as well, that we will put all of the power and influence and tools of this government to work on this issue, so we can take the asterisk away from our celebrations of how great our city is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll be fairly quick, because thinking about going last is most of what I would normally cover has already been covered. So, you know, to Urban Ministries, Durham Senior Life, you being, you know, elected as president of the State League. Mayor Protem, I don't think you really did a good job at really saying what it actually means. The North Carolina League of Municipalities is the largest and most influential and powerful organization that represents cities and towns across the entire state of North Carolina. There are millions of people represented by this organization. And while I sit on the executive, on the actual Board of Directors, our mayor, Protem, is the state president of that organization, and that is a really, really big deal. We get to have our legislative asks twice. Last time, we got some transportation policies passed through the General Assembly because of the league. Not only do we send our own legislative agenda, but now we have the president and a board member, both from Durham, on this board. So I foresee some significant influence coming from Durham to the state of North Carolina. For you all that don't know, we had a police officer, and Mayor Protem just mentioned this, Officer Jones. She was, you know, she was on duty. She was advancing to an emergency and unfortunately, you know, had a really bad car accident. Without going into too much detail, this was extremely serious, and she is still, she's still in her situation, just respecting her privacy. But I do ask that we, you know, keep her in your prayers and keep her held up, lifted. And as soon as she's able to receive visitors, I will be in that hospital room to visit her. But yeah, it was really serious. Emily Kaye Center held its Mother's Day Ball, and we did a really good job at raising money for providing services for children in Durham. Emily Kaye Center is a huge partner with Durham Public Schools and other schools throughout the city, and it's really great to have that partner, where you have a center that focuses solely on, you know, our youth, what they're going to do, you know, after high school. But mainly, they focus on kids that are interested in going to college, and they have programs that are quite robust. And they are very intentional about ensuring that they are accessible to every child, especially those who are most in need in the city. And it feels good when you can raise almost a half million dollars for our youth to make sure that they have what they need. I know many folks who have been, whose children have been a product of this program, and I've seen it, you know, at work. So it was great to be at that. Also, Lincoln Health, Lincoln Health celebrated an annual awards luncheon, and they recognize giants, giants in our community, and just want to highlight them. Colleagues, I am going to, when we go to these events, I'm just, when I get on stage and share remarks, I'm going to start asking, are there any councilmembers in? Because I'm noticing some of y'all do what I do. You get places late and I miss you, and then I don't recognize you, and then Commissioner Alom has to show me up, and she gets on the stage, and she's like, and we have councilmembers here, Councilmember Freeman and Riss, and I'm like, oh my God. I felt horrible. So I'm on the record saying I was embarrassed, and I apologize about that.
I was there first thing. I was not late, just so you know.
Well, no, you were sitting behind someone, I couldn't see you. But I just want to highlight the Lincoln Community Health Center and their work that they continuously do. Back in 2011 or 2012, I was chair of the board for the North Carolina Foundation for Public Schoolchildren, and we were desperately, you know, just in need of money, and we came up with an idea. We said, let's start a gala, let's do a gala. And at first gala, we raised about, close, probably about $80,000. Well, 11 years, 12 years later, 11 or 12 years later, we are still hosting that gala, and I had the honor of being the emcee. It was a full circle moment, and we raised over $300,000. And I want to thank my colleagues for showing up that night. I want to thank my colleagues here on council for showing up, the county commissioners, the county commissioner elects, Durham was in the building. And you follow my socials, you would see those pictures up. The photographer was pretty dope, too. But that was a really good evening. And also shout out to the Duke School and Carrington Middle School. And I'm going to say this publicly, if you have children at your school, please have them sign up to come to City Hall for field trip. This is a hard job, it gets really stressful. So we appreciate the light moments when we get to actually talk about what government does. And tomorrow will be, the students wrote me letters, I could actually understand most of their handwriting. They wrote letters, and tomorrow, I responded to every letter, and we're going to go drop those letters off at the school tomorrow morning. So really excited about that. But please use City Hall as a field trip to get our kids more civically engaged, because our General Assembly has done a good job at that. I shouldn't say that on record, right? All right. All right. And the last two things here, you know, well, of course, congratulations to all the graduates that graduated from my alma mater at CCU yesterday, and all of the graduates that are about to graduate from Duke, and also the students that are graduating from Durham Tech and our high schoolers. Shout out to the Teacher of the Year. I don't know if this has ever happened, but can't remember his last name, First Sergeant. But two years in a row, Hillside High School has had the Durham Public Schools Teacher of the Year. And the Principal of the Year, for the second time, they're doing something pretty amazing over there. So kudos to Hillside High School and First Sergeant for, not only was he held back in high school, but now he's the district teacher of the year. So really excited about that. Lastly, our small businesses. I don't talk about this a lot, I try to just work on policy toward it, but obviously, I think many folks know, my wife and I own restaurants here, but this isn't about us. This is about what our city takes so much pride in, you know, being a foodie town. And right now, and I'm glad to see it, but there are folks actually talking about what's happening with the restaurants downtown, or what's happening with our small businesses. Let me tell you, as a practitioner of it, we are struggling. They are struggling bad. And we don't have enough pool to bring people here, you know, we don't have a big convention center where it's always full, you know. We're really relying on the folks that are in this community. And there was someone that made one of the most ignorant comments, said, well, maybe they should stop inflating their prices for the rich people downtown. You know, when you're actually in the business and know what you're talking about, when you realize that you're a victim of price gouging from the actual transportation food companies, and you're trying to survive, I just want to say that our small businesses across the city, I hear you, I feel the pain along with you, and please don't be distracted by ignorant comments like that. And we'll continue together to call on our community to make sure that we support part of one of the reasons why Durham is so dope. All right? And lastly, I will continue to highlight this, there's a lot going on in this world, there's a lot going on across this country. In the last two weeks, we've had 11 shootings. And we've had 11 shootings, and we've lost about four or five people. I've held two town halls, and I will come to your neighborhood if you invite me to talk about what is happening and what I hope we can do about it. But I will highlight the fact that the people who are pulling these triggers and the people who are on the receiving end of these guns look just like me. They're young black boys. That's just a fact. And I got to, I have to speak my truth. I don't hear a whisper, and that's painful. So I hope that, as a matter of fact, not hope, we must multitask. We must, as a matter of fact, we have students that are protesting right now about what's going on around the world, that has to happen, too. We can't be numb to hatred, we can't be numb to killing, but we also have to make sure people are safe, and we also have to take care of our own backyard. You have to do both. And it requires us to do that as a people, because if we're silent, that doesn't do anything but allow us to continue to deteriorate. So speak up, I appreciate it. Speak up around the world, speak up across the state, across this country, but I really hope you also speak up right here in Durham. Because it's happening on a daily basis. And I've said before, it's starting to creep, and it's going to get in those neighborhoods that we're not used to seeing. So with that being said, there will be some initiatives that are coming up that I'll be really pushing privately as well as publicly, and we just can't be quiet, folks, can't be quiet. And it's very complex, it's really complicated. But we're Durham, we can handle it. It can be both. All right. We've never had celebration, celebratory items for an hour and a half, and I won't let this happen again. Now, we're going to get to the business. All right, so Madam Manager, let's get to your priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Williams, Mr. Mayor Protem Middleton, and members of the Durham City Council. I have three priority items for you this evening. Agenda item number six, Lofts at South Side Phase III amended development loan commitment. The additional information requested during the April 18, 2024 City Council Work Session has been attached. Agenda item number 20, general obligation bond referendum presentation and discussion. The additional information requested during the April 18, 2024 City Council Work Session can be found under priority items by the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. And finally, agenda item number 21, City of Durham Classification and Compensation Study Presentation. The additional information requested during the April 18, 2024 City Council Work Session can be found under priority items by the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. That is all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, it's good to see you and members of the council, it's good to be here. The city attorney's office has no priority items this evening.
I love when you say that. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and council members. It's nice to see you all tonight. The city clerk's office has no priority items this evening.
Thank you so much. Do I have an Eloise O'Neal in the room? And I could be mispronounced, we've been trying to figure out the last name, but Eloise or Alois? It was signing up to speak on a affordable, last four digits of the phone number is 1311? Okay. You signed up to speak for affordable housing for, you know what? I think this is for an item. Was this to speak on a particular item tonight? Okay, got you. You don't have to go into detail, I just needed to know which agenda item it was? Okay, that's fine. You know what? Because I don't want to put you on the spot like this, I want to get someone over to help you just to make sure, because if it's a general comment, then I have to invite you back on Thursday. If it's an agenda item tonight, then we'll be able to get you inserted on that one. But we're going to make sure you're going to be a professional council speaker when you leave here. All right? All right, thank you. All right, everything else is indicated. All right, at this time, I will go ahead and read our consent agenda. Item number one, participatory budgeting steering committee appointment. Item number two, resolution to set a public hearing to consider permanent closure of 479 Lanier Feet of Dacian, 479 Lanier Feet of Dacian Avenue. Dation, oh yeah, Dation, I'm sorry. Number three, resolution authorizing the conveyance of surplus properties to Durham Community Land Trustees Incorporated and the approval of the development agreement for the purpose of affordable housing development.
I don't want to pull it, I just want to appreciate staff on getting this moved forward. Thank you.
Staff, you're appreciated. Number four, resolution authorizing the conveyance of surplus properties to Black Lamb Development Corporation and the approval of the development agreement. Corporation and the Approval of Development Agreement for the Purpose of Affordable Housing Development. Number five, Contract Amendment Number One with McCormick Baron Salazar Development for Lofts at South Side Phase Three and Phase Four Site Preparation and Environmental Assessment.
Again, I don't want to pull it, but I do want to appreciate. I think this has been about 12 years in the making, so it's finally good to get to phase
Thank you. Number six, Lofts at South Side Phase Three amended development loan commitment. Number seven, Lofts at South Side Phase Four amended development loan commitment. Number eight, Resolution Authorizing the Conveyance of Surplus Properties to Habitat for Humanity of Durham Incorporated and the Approval of Development Agreement for the Purpose of Affordable Housing Development. Number nine, Utility System Revenue Bonds Series 2024. Number 10, Durham Station Transit Center Improvements Project Authorization to Negotiate and Execute a Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the Construction Manager at Risk Contract for Construction Services. Number 11, Contract ST-332C Pavement Condition Survey 2024. Number 12, Contract Amendment Number One for SW94 Sidewalk Repairs 2024. Number 13, Contract Amendment Number Three for ST-317C Utility Locate Services. Number four, Street and Infrastructure Acceptances. What did I say? I'm sorry. Number 14, Street and Infrastructure Acceptances. Number 15, Construction of 17 Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacons, RRFBS, at School and Trail Crossings. Not pulling it, but it is a start. I just appreciate taking action around school zones and safety. And we'll continue to try and do more. Number 16, Transit Grant Project Ordinance Amendment for Durham Station. Number 17, Blanket Purchase Order Agreement with Core and Main LP for Neptune Water Meters and Components. Number 18, Agreement Between City of Durham and Orange Water Sewer Authority Regarding Mutual Aid for Drinking Water Supply. Number 19, Proposed Water and Sewer Rates for Fiscal Year 2024/2025. Yeah. All right. General Business. Number 22, Consolidated Annexation Kate's Estate. Number 23, Consolidated Zoning Map Change Fox Crossing Two. Number 24, Fiscal Year 2025 Storm Water Rates and GBA. General Business Agenda. Number 25, Summer Camp Funding Request. All right. Now entertain a motion to approve the consent.
Remove.
Remove the property second. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Colleagues, we're going to go ahead and address number five first, 25 first. I don't know why I'm missing the first digit tonight. So Councilmember Freeman, this is your item.
Just point of order, do we not need to approve the consent agenda?
We did. It was unanimous.
I thought you said priority items. To include the priority items. So we only voted for the priority items?
Yeah. So we just do that. Do priority items have motions during the work session?
Thank you.
So we're going to start with number 25. And Councilmember Freeman, you're the resource person on this.
Just reiterating this continued support for the Education 360 Camp that was held last summer with students from Cornwallis, students and parents and families from Cornwallis, and just continuing the work supporting families and children from black artists' summer plane art and murals to summer camp. Just calling on my colleagues to support the children in our community and just acknowledge that they're still recovering from the trauma of gun violence and COVID. That's all. Thank you.
All right. We have some speakers here for item number 25. We will go with speakers and then we'll bring it back before the council. First speaker I have is Built to Last, Dr. Joyce Blackwell.
To the Honorable Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, City Manager Page, and other members of the City Council. Good evening. I'm Dr. Joyce Blackwell, the Executive Director of Built to Last Innovations Lab Incorporated. Built to Last is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that provides access to training, access to opportunity, and by the end of this year, if we remain on track, access to capital. And we provide these opportunities to historically underrepresented businesses in Durham as well as residents who live in the city's marginalized and minoritized communities. Thanks to the generous funds received to date from the City of Durham, we have been able to set up the organization and began to offer services to our core focus groups. More specifically, we have been focused on providing training as well as mentoring and networking opportunities to childcare entrepreneurs as well as aspiring childcare providers and creative artists who want to become entrepreneurs. We are also providing training to encore entrepreneurs, the 55-plus individuals who were terminated or released from their positions that they'd been in for over 30 years in many instances during the height of the COVID-19. And as a consequence, many of them could not return to work. Ageism is really real, but they could not return and decided that they could not afford to stay home. And so many of them with a life savings on average of $9,000 realized that they needed to do something. And so many of them have decided to use their skills, their experience, et cetera, to open their own businesses. Also, of course, we desire to assist Durham in achieving its goal of shared economic prosperity by utilizing our resources to help create a more inclusive business ecosystem. And to date, we have been providing training to at least 30 childcare providers in Durham. We also have a waitlist of a little over, with 15 persons on that waitlist, and that is growing each and every day. There is definitely a need. It's the same thing with the creative artists. Of course, while we have been extremely busy, it has been a challenge and continues to be a challenge. Therefore, I come before you today and request that you consider Built to Last for any funding that you may receive for fiscal year 2024/25. We earned our needs of funds to continue to build capacity. Currently, with the number of things that we are doing, it's just myself who's full-time and a part-time administrative assistant. And while I could use my skills for grant writing and to pursue corporate funding, most of my time is spent grassroots, working at the grassroots level. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, I have Ms. Denise Rawson with Durham Freedom Schools Summer Camp. Just if you can give it to the clerk, she'll make sure we get it.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and Mayor Pro Tem and the members of City Council. Good evening. My name is Denise Rawson, and I am the Project Director for Durham's Freedom School Program, Children's Defense Fund Freedom Schools. And I come before you because we have brought this program back to Durham. We started in 2023. If you know anything about Children's Defense Fund, it was started by Marion Wright Edelman. And the Freedom School Program started, has its roots in the 1964 Mississippi Movement, where they were teaching Mississippians how to read and write in order to vote. So 40 years later, we are now back doing freedom schools, and this is now the second year. Independently, after I retired from Durham Public Schools, started freedom schools last year with the help of the Mount Level Community Partnership for Racial Justice. And this year, we are now going to serve 110 children. We are going to serve 50 children, 50 elementary school students at Epworth United Methodist Church, and 50 middle school students at Shepherd Middle School. So as you will see, and you do not have your, you don't have the handout, but basically, freedom schools is to empower children between the ages with the grades of K through 8, okay, to have an appreciation for reading. One thing about it, about freedom schools, is that it's literacy-rich. During the course of the summer, young people are reading about 50 books that are selected and curriculum written by CDF Freedom Schools. In addition to that, we provide STEAM and arts and cultural kinds of activities so that our children will be able to have a holistic program. So during the mornings, they do reading and other activities. In the afternoon, it is strictly for enrichment. We do have our three pillars, literacy, curriculum, and instruction. We do have a family component where we have family nights every single week where parents come and discuss various topics that influence their child's education and to really kind of see how children are doing. And we also have an intergenerational component where we employ college students to come and work with the young people during the course of the summer. And this year, we are hiring 13 college students to work with us. We do have a social justice component, and I could mention that Mayor Williams was our speaker last year when our subject was gun violence. He came and talked to the children about how they can be empowered to fight this crisis in their community. We also took them by Amtrak train to the International Civil Rights Museum last year. So they got a chance, both them and their parents, had the chance to visit that museum and go by Amtrak. So I mentioned parent nights and the need for freedom schools. It's just literacy, okay? I know my time is up. I can't talk about freedom schools in two minutes, okay? It is so much. But Durham needs this program, and I'm asking that if you have any additional funds, because I'm told that they've already been spent, I know, to please consider freedom schools, you know, in that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And please make sure you get in touch with me. I have a few college students that are looking for just volunteer time this summer. Yep. Thanks for coming. Mr. Kassib?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager, and the City Council. My name is Brother Kassib Abdullah. I am the Executive Director for Believers United for Progress. We're located on Fayetteville Street, right next door to WD Hill Community Center and right down the street from North Carolina Central. We have been in existence since 2005, and we are 501(c)(3). I am here requesting funding for two items. One is our Food and Security Program, and the other item is the Hope Center. Our Food and Security Program, there's two things that we do. We give out food boxes every week, which is around 160 to 180 food boxes, and we run a free community kitchen every day, Monday through Friday. We service any place from 85 to 100 people. Our main source is a food bank. We are, I believe, the largest agency that gets food from the food bank. We get any place from 7,000 to 10,000 pounds of food every week from the food bank. That equates to 23,000 food boxes a year, which consists of 7,800 families per year. A population we serve is a human population in Durham. 50% of our African-American brothers and sisters, 35% of our Latinx brothers and sisters, 15% of our Caucasian brothers and sisters, and others. The second request, we are in the process of developing the Hope Center. The Hope Center would be a central location composed of over 100 units that provide services to the community. We want the Hope Center to be in Fayetteville. That would be the glue and cohesion to keep the community sound in that area because there is room for everybody in Fayetteville. With that, we would have many opportunities to bring supporting factors to the community to help stabilize the community. And I'm going to put a figure on it. For the Food and Security Project, we were requesting $200,000. For the Hope Center, we were requesting $5 million to establish the development of the Hope Center.
Thank you so much. And I just want to note that I recently spoke about a chef. She was cooking right after the shooting, right there at WD Hill. And she was brave enough to go out there that next day and serve the community. She was able to do that because of Mr. Abdullah. He does it every day, that location. And thank you for coming to show your work tonight. I have Christopher, oh, Megan. Hey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council, and everybody. Please excuse my husband. He is on a phone call with some of our students. We had to push it back a little bit, so it's just me right now. My name is Megan Wilder. I am the Executive Director of Bull City Best, best standing for building, educating, strengthening together. I am here today because Durham, Bull City, needs us. We believe in the heart and the soul of the children and of the staff. I am a beginning teacher mentor for Durham Public Schools. I've worked for Durham Public Schools for about 16 years. I am also the niece of Dr. James E. and Annie Day Shepherd. And if you know anything about North Carolina Central University and my aunt and uncle, you know that they did a lot for the city and for the youth in Durham. So I am carrying along their legacy. My husband was born and raised here in Durham. He grew up at the John Avery Boys and Girls Club that you all may see him pass by on 147 that we're kind of just watching disintegrate. We love that building, and we kind of have built dreams in the parking lot of that building. And a couple of those dreams start with our initiatives. So one is the Annie Project, and that is something that we do bimonthly. We have packed over 200 Essentials gift bags for the houseless in Durham. And the student athletes and the students that come to Bull City Best, pack them themselves and their families, and we give them out throughout Durham. and their families, and we give them out throughout Durham. And then we also bimonthly pass out food. We get Marco's Pizza and we get coffee and hot chocolate and donuts. And we also do that for the houseless and we have our students down there. So that's bimonthly and that is our Annie Project. We have a Building Bridges Project, which this year, this year, we did 300 bookbags for local Durham students. We did specifically WG Pearson Elementary, Lakewood Elementary, and then we had a couple of open drives where anybody as a Durham resident could come in and get a bookbag that was filled with various items. We have an initiative that we hope to launch, if we get funding, called Kunst, which is the German word for arts. And I have my background in dance and the arts are a major part of what we do and what we really want to start up. We also have our Best Ballers Initiative, which is a basketball team, but we are more than just basketball. We are being CPR certified. Please consider us for funding for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker I have is Otis Lyons and Tanisha Adams for Campaign for Change.
Good afternoon, everyone. I won't call out names, but thank you for the opportunity. Just wanted to appreciate the mayor for calling me at the last minute. I don't really know myself pitching anything right now. I just want your support in the future because we are already in motion to do what we're doing. A little bit of background about me. My name is Otis Lyons. I am the Executive Director and founder of Campaign for Change. Been in existence now for 23 years. It's anti-gang, anti-drug focused. This is my partner, Tanisha Adams, on the new project we're doing. Want to give a little background about me real quick. I started one of the first gangs in Durham and I'm not proud of it. And at the age of 19, I was sentenced to a 30-year sentence in prison. My sentence was overturned after about five years. And I just made it my business to create a program and organization that could help kids like me, kids that's in impoverished communities, that parents be on drugs, that is nowhere to be found. And that became my passion. So I formed this nonprofit organization called Campaign for Change. And since I existed starting in 2000, we have been known for our innovative outreach, resonating with the gang culture. I'm really focused on gangs and ceasefire and gun control, gun violence, and all the murders. One of the things that we developed was the Don's Basketball League in 2012. And we end up having 140 kids be a part of it. And we use basketball as the hook, but basketball wasn't what we was doing. We, we realized that Durham's highest crime rate was on a certain, from 5 to 9. So we created the basketball games from 5 to 10. And before we played the games, we had three classes from 3 to 4, 4 to 5. So that worked extremely well and then COVID hit. And when COVID hit, I had to reach back and think about what can we do now because the gang population and the crime kept growing. And I realized during my 23 years of Campaign for Change, really 43 years of experience, 20 years of selling drugs, gang banging, and destroying my community, and 23 years of now being an advocate for the kids. I realized we all was dropping the ball, my organization, other organizations, other programs. You can have the best programs in the world, but if you don't change the mindset of these youth that's being attracted by this gang violence and these guns, you're, you're just having a great program and they're not going to come to it. So I thought about it and if you can vision, if you will, if you have a drug addiction, you, you have to go to a detox center. If you have an alcohol addiction, you have to go to a detox center. So I formulated, it was a nine, a vision nine years ago, I formulated what they call the Gang Transitional House, which they are, they'll go to the house and they'll be de-brainwashed, reeducated, and taught trades so they can become productive citizens. Where that's where Tanisha came in. She's a Realtor licensed minister. She has this wonderful house, 5,000 square foot house, that we are already developing and establishing this gang transition house. Nobody ever done it before. One of the key factors, I just want to say that, we partnering with the DA. And basically, they're not going to come to the gang transition house. So the DA.
Against the law.
Instead of sending them to prison or instead of sending them to the census center, they will send them to the gang transitional house. So please support us. We have a document there you can read, an overview of us. Thank you. Sorry if I missed anything.
It's all good. Thank, thank you all. There's a lot of good work going on in this neighborhood. That's all the speakers I have. I will bring it back before the council now. Yes.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to hear from some of our community resources. I did have a question for Mr. Lyons and Ms. Adams. Am I saying that right? Adams? I know that three minutes is not always enough and I just wanted to follow up. You said the Gang Transition House, and I know I had a tour. You, you actually are in the process of working on developing this Gang Transition House. And I just wanted you to at least state if there was a number that you had in mind for support, what that would look like.
A number, far as dollars? Far as dollars, right now, I have sent Ms. Page, as well as we just met with the county manager, requesting $500,000 as the partnership, 250 for the city, 250 from the county. We have a lot of other private sectors that's supporting and getting behind this as well. We met with over 30-some individuals and company owners and CEOs. And we try to invite people to come to the house so they can really see the vision. We invite any of you, at any time on the document, you can call us and, and set up a meeting or email us. We invite you to the house.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
It's definitely a beautiful home.
Yeah, and I thank you, Ms. Freeman and the mayor, for taking your time out to come and see the house.
Thank you. I did want to note, I didn't, I left that part off about creating a pool that would kind of follow up to support in the future ongoing opportunities for folks in the community to provide services for our children. I think that this speaks to that and there are a number of ways we can support. I will say for the, for the gentleman, Mr. Kasib Abdullah, that the Food and Security Program with the county has really been kicking off. And I would definitely try to figure out how to connect both of them, the New Africa and, and the county supports. And I think for the Bull City, I'm sorry.
Best.
Bull City Best. I think that the, I mean, these are great ways for us to support our students and families in our community. And I really hope that there'll be support to move forward. Thank you.
Yes, same. And I, I, when this, when this item came, you know, we've had some rich debate about it, rich conversation. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I didn't want it to be, and Councilmember Freeman, I know this wasn't your intention, but also just from the public looking in, I didn't want them to think that there was only one thing happening. There was so much good work happening. And, you know, part of my push with this is establishing a community fund. You know, now we have recorded in the record forever the amazing work that's been done in this community. And this is just, this is not even scratching the surface, you know? And, and if anyone, you know, we can create a fund where people can actually invest in and make their community better. I think we see some of the examples that we have here. And I think that, that's how we can also, you know, it's, it's, it's really like mutual aid, you know, is making each other better. So this, this was an opportunity. I know we, we're probably going to get into conversation about this, this one item, but this is the point that I knew I was making, that I'd rather focus on creating that type of fund than, than just, you know, one here, one there, one here, one there. So, thank you. Any other comments? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted, my, my recollection was at the works, I have a couple of things. My recollection of the work session, Madam Manager, was that you were including something in your budget which you're presenting to us at our next meeting, that, that you had heard council's concerns specifically around summer camps and some kind of pool of money. And I just wanted to make sure I had heard that correctly.
Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. That is exactly what you heard, along with all of the other priorities and the direction that we have received from the council as we have proceeded during this budget process. It is, it is my intention to, in the, in the manager's proposed budget, propose a, a sum of money. It never means it is approved, nor does it mean it's the final number. But as we negotiate very, 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 a lot of priorities this budget season, it would be the government's administration's effort as a beginning amount for a, for a fund. And you will receive that on the 20th. I do not want it to seem as if it is going to, you know, be responsive to all of the asks, not tonight or any other, you know, response to everything that we receive through communication, through conversations we have with, you know, with the residents and, you know, and organizations that are doing great work. But it will be, along with a lot of other initiatives and priorities in the budget that I propose on the 20th.
I have a couple more. I appreciate that. I just, so.
Do you mind if I ask her a question about that?
Sure. You do you.
That, Madam Manager, would that fund be publicly accessible for people to either match it or contribute to it? Or do we need to identify a nonprofit to do that type of work?
So, so typically, when we are, when we have a, you know, a pot of money that is set aside for a particular purpose, that we want to, we want to encourage community partners to engage with us to provide the work, not work that we're actually, you know, that we are performing inside the government. It does start with some type of process. You know, we set sort of parameters around, you know, with the community and with the council on the objective of the fund. And then we would, it is always, you know, in the best interest of everybody involved and for efficiency for us to receive proposals, whether it is a large pot of money, like the $22 million that we have for ARPA, or small amounts of money. We're going to have more proposers than money. So we have to have a process in order to prioritize and bring recommendations to the council for approval. So it would be, you know, the, the government's amount that is included, you know, it, it doesn't, it preclude additional donations or funds to it.
Clarify that question after, Councilmember. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I, Councilmember Freeman, thank you for the memo. My understanding, at least where we left it at the work session, was that we were discussing the 41,000 and it was essentially amending our current budget to include for this current, we were amending the budget for our current fiscal year because of the timing of the camp. And that was what I know I agreed to add to the agenda. The memo that's in front of us is a little different than what we talked about on, on that Thursday. And so I am just a little, especially in light of what the city manager just said, that there is going to be a resolution provided by staff, I certainly don't feel comfortable doing any of those second parts at all. I was already super hesitant around the 41,000, specifically because exactly, you know, one of my concerns is there's lots of need out in the community, as we've just seen just from a few. I wish somebody had tallied the, the number, the amount of money that people have already asked for tonight.
7.2 million.
Yeah. So in a, in a public comment period of what, I think?
12.
20 minutes max? Wait, three minutes maybe? Maybe not even 20, 15 minutes? There was a 7.2 million dollar ask. So that's been my, you know, and I think many of us have raised that, that, you know, that was a major kind of issue was that we would prefer a clear, a clear process, since it is public money, these are tax dollars. Everybody pays for this. And as we know with ARPA, where we had $52 million, much, much bigger than I'm sure what the staff is going to be able to propose in our budget. We had $52 million worth of asks with ARPA dollars, or we had $52 million and I think over $100 million worth of asks when we opened it up to community easily.
14 million.
Yeah. So to Madam Manager's point, the ask, there's always more than what we can do with, with city dollars. And I do appreciate the mayor's discussion of a, of a fund. You know, what, what can we do if the city puts a little bit, the county puts a little bit, private philanthropic dollars can go into it? That's a longer-term solution than what I think we're trying to figure out tonight. But I certainly am not comfortable with what, what the memo states right now. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Okay. I actually, do I need to wait? I'm okay.
You're good. It just reminded me, we do need to take a break, so.
Okay. I'm just going to piggyback just a little bit on what Councilmember Cabyiro was asking. So she actually asked my first part of my question, but Manager Page, I just, I was hearing these folks talk and they said that they had discussed some numbers with you. And I'm wondering if the, I know we've, we've heard about this summer camp potential fund, but not everything that was talked about was summer camp specific. And I'm wondering if there were other asks that have made it or might make it into the proposed budget for the next fiscal year that came from the organizations that we heard from tonight, or if there is anything outside of the summer camp that is being proposed.
So I can certainly say that anything that you heard tonight is, is not in the proposed budget. It's just, it's basically just coming tonight. There was one request that was here this evening that did come to us. It is not, it is not the first time that Campaign for Change has made a request to the city. And the city has supported Campaign for Change in initiatives over the years, over many years. And it just depends on, you know, what cycle we're in and what pots of money are available, you know, to support organizations that are providing great work in the community.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Freeman for her advocacy on this issue. With respect to the fund and who can apply to it, I, I think, if I recall the thrust of Councilmember Freeman's statements, the summer camp had a certain impact. It, it, it effectuated certain impacts in young people's lives. And I think that if we focus more on the impact of the organizations, more so whether, whether there was summer camp or whatever, I mean, we can contour the fund for, for organizations that have that type of impact. It just happens to be a summer camp, but the main point, at least as I heard her, was what it did for young people, the way it reshaped their, and recontoured their lives. So as far as the fund, which I support, we can, you know, we can contour it for impact rather than actual anatomy of the program, such a, so Campaign for Change, a, a summer camp, Freedom Schools can, can approach this fund based upon their impact. I, I do want to say in terms of the, the first ask, this, this is precisely what we said would happen. I mean, these folk are here tonight, this isn't a budget hearing. They're speaking to this item because this item has money attached to an organization to have impact. So the, the procession will begin, as well it should, which, which leads me to my discomfort in, in, inside of, here's the deal. If Heart of Champion is eligible for 2024 money, then all of these organizations are. Every one of them is eligible or, or meets, I think, the test, the litmus test for consideration for this current year, an amendment. And if we're not going to do that for all of them, then Heart of the Champions has already gotten this kind of consideration once already. And as I said, you know, to my honorable colleagues at our last meeting, I think we have to consider precedent and what, what precedent we're setting. I am fully supportive of the fund for 2425. But what do we say to these organizations if we're going to once again do an ad hoc intervention in our current budget for the same organization two years straight, who I feel would qualify for this budget next year? What do we say to them? Why, why are they getting? Why are they getting this due consideration for this particular year and also probably be eligible for next year as well, but these other organizations that have come that we knew would are not? Is it simply because they asked, or is it simply because they have a council member advocating for it? So I think that's something we need to keep in mind in terms of precedent-setting and message sending. There's no doubt in my mind that Heart of a Champion will get funding, will qualify for funding in this fund, whatever fund we set up for '24, '25. But they've already gotten ad hoc specialized consideration once. I don't understand, or I'm fearful of the message we will be sending if we do that again for this particular organization and then invite them, along with the others that we heard tonight, for '24, '25. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Wrist?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Councilmember Freeman once again for your advocacy here. I don't think there's a bigger advocate for children and families on this council, so thank you for that. I also want to thank the folks who come tonight. The amazing set of groups that are providing support for kids, whether it's a camp or otherwise, is inspiring to see that and the passion behind that work. I also want to say, I would be remiss if I didn't mention this, as the city council representative to the Recreation Advisory Committee, that our own Parks and Recreation Department directly provides all kinds of summer camp opportunities. You can go on the website, there's traditional camps, there's specialty camps, there's half-day camps, there's a teen camp. W. City Manager Chadwell could tell us more about that work coming out of DPR, but there's a lot that we're doing directly. So I want to make sure everyone knows that the city cares deeply about summer camps and supporting our kids in the summertime. I support the idea of a fund for next year, as we're talking about, but agree with others that to make a decision now based on the current budget seems like, process-wise, not the best way to go. So that's my feeling on the matter. I'm not, to be honest, I'm not sure what our motion is before the council. I'd love some clarification, because I know the memo has, I think there's three separate motions in the memo. So just want to make sure I'm clear what we're ultimately going to take a vote on.
Before we get there, I wanted to just note that I only included the second motion just in highlighting some of the conversation and that there was no guidance, so I just wanted to give some guidance. It is okay to leave that one off, just acknowledging that the city manager is moving forward. But I do think that the processes should not come before children and their need, especially in the Cornwallis neighborhood where gun violence is prevalent. And I do want to say that I appreciate all of the organizations that do good work in our community, but it is very specific that this process was laid out, and I tried to incorporate this timeline so that they could be included, so that it essentially highlights how we're leaving community out of the process. And so I do want to, especially for summer camps. And for the Parks and Rec comments, just noting that Parks and Recs is usually full by March, April, May, and parents, families, anyone trying to find summer camps for children in K through six, because they cannot be left home alone, is specific. And so just noting, there's this kind of childcare need here, there's also kind of an equity aspect in that Cornwallis is where four-bedroom apartments like are in our community, where there's the most need and least resources. And then the amount of, the amount, the $41,000 is a very minor amount. I mean, I think we could cover that with the shortage or actually the vacancies that we have in our budget, just, I mean, from a number of departments. It's not that big of an ask. And I do want to be clear that putting process before the children is a harmful message to send to the community, because I do think that the children need to come first in this conversation and acknowledging that the families who are struggling don't always know how to ask and what to ask for. So I made the ask, and even still, with all of the wherewithal of being on this council for seven years, I still cannot manage to navigate the timeframe, and that was why I made the request. So I can understand that folks can't support it, whatever their reasoning is, that's on you. But as a person who's lived in this community, has children, and has worked with children in the community for over 15 years, I think it's important to make sure that I push as hard as possible to at least get one of the items in this year's cycle, and then for the next cycle, a multitude of them. It's not lost on me that process comes first for a lot of folks on this council, but I can't say enough that there are rules, and rules are sometimes meant to be broken when they don't work for the people who are harmed the most. That's all. Thank you.
May I press him?
Thank you. I don't think there's any person on this council that puts process before people. I'm certainly not going to attack people for voting against ShotSpotter, which I think saves lives. So I just want to go on record, I honor the opinions and the best selves that I think every person on this podium brings to the conversation. I think the issue, Councilmember, is that it's a specific, it's not even for the Cornwallis neighborhood. I mean, I supported $10 million for the Fayetteville Street corridor, not a particular organization on Fayetteville Street. I think the issue is that this organization has already gotten this consideration once. And I didn't use process, I used precedent, the word precedent. What precedent are we setting and establishing? Again, I stand by the comment that every organization that came before us tonight touches children. They are just as, I think, worthy of getting a special consideration for this current year, as opposed to next year, as any of the other organizations. So I don't think we're putting process before people. We're trying to reach as many children as possible without sending the message that we have arbitrarily, or whatever, cherry-picked one particular camp, not even a whole community, a particular camp, an organization out of a plethora of many well-meaning and well-established organizations. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember?
Thank you. I just want to say, I mean, I think part of the thing around, and this is where it does get tricky, I mean, the reason we have process is because this isn't our money. This is tax money. This is everybody's money in this room, and if we don't actually have rules, that's actually how corruption and cronyism begin. And so while this is not the case in this, I know that you have no personal relationship with this camp, that has been clearly stated multiple times, that's the reason, at least for me. That's one of the most important things I can do as an elected official. How am I using public money? And am I using it in the right ethical way? And I think that's why there's a lot of rules around ethics and politicians and how they're using public money. And it's one of the reasons that politicians often get in trouble over and over and over again, because this is shared money. We collectively put this into a pot, and we make decisions. And the seven of us have to make those decisions for almost $300,000, or 300,000 people. And last year was a $610 million budget, and it is one of our most important charges. And so I take it very seriously, even if it's only $41,000. And I will continue to do that, because that's what I think is, that is, to me, being an ethical decision-maker. And everyone approaches this job differently, and that's fine. But process is important, because this isn't my money. This isn't the money that I have earned to spend. This is collective dollars.
Thank you. I would love to just be clear, I didn't indicate process wasn't important. And I think ethics is very important as well, which is why I think it's ethical to be upfront and transparent that this is a camp that has benefited those children in Cornwallis neighborhood and their families. And so I would like to make the motion to approve the city manager to allocate the funds in the FY 2024 budget for the Heart of Champion Summer Camp and allocate funds for the 2025 to cover July and August months.
So I haven't entertained a motion just yet. I, and we'll get there, because we need a break for closed captioning. Madam Clerk, I got your message, definitely. Just real quick, for the public to understand where we are, last year, at the end of a meeting, during the budget deliberations, I believe we had pretty much gotten past the main part. Councilmember Freeman did propose a camp. The council obliged and basically said, well, we'll do it this time, but let's make sure it's in the budget process next year. And I believe the next meeting, we had someone at that meeting said, well, you gave it to them, what about us? And because we did, well, we had to give $50,000 to that group to fly kids across the country for a track meet. And it hurt me to my core, because I felt that we politicized kids, and we had to make it right, because we chose one over another, rather than taking a more holistic approach to it. So it was basically put in the budget process as it was supposed to be this year. Unfortunately, it did not receive enough support, because the interest of the council at large was to address maybe having a fund, where we can just have groups, summer camps, organizations apply to it. And that would keep us from choosing one over another, but also make it at a process where people can meet a particular criteria. And hopefully, we can get to that point. Unfortunately, it was brought back up to be on the agenda work session, and we had a spirited debate about it, and that's how we got here tonight. And again, I know where I stand is, there's a lot of work, and I'm glad folks came out tonight. And I wanted to make sure folks took advantage of this opportunity to also state the good work that they're doing, and to make sure that we can use a fund where people can actually, not only the city, the city can put up our part if we choose to make that policy, but also the private community, private philanthropy can all invest in it, to where, it could be a life fund, whatever we want to call it, to where people, organizations that meets the criteria. We've done this before with small businesses, the blueprint is there. And now we're looking to do the same, but for youth in our community. God knows we need it. So that is what I'm proposing, that's what I hope we can address and get to. I don't want to, this isn't a matter of process over kids. I've been in this community as a parent for over 15 years, working in this community as a teacher in many of the communities, most of the communities where it's hard to find teachers to go. And as a matter of fact, Campaign for Change came to my classroom when I first started teaching at Shepherd Middle School. So I appreciate the work that's being done. There's a whole lot of work to be done, and now we have innovative ideas, and I think that Durham needs to get on the ball with supporting these. And through the government is not the only way. The government can put up its part through collective taxes, but it's time for the business community, the philanthropy community, the private community, the big bucks to invest in the quality of life in this city. And that is what I support. And that's why I won't choose just one organization. We can, I mean, we're talking about kids here, of course, their lives are impacted. But we also have a responsibility that many don't, and that is make these types of decisions to do what's right. So now I'll entertain a motion to approve the city manager to allocate funds in the fiscal year 2024, that's this year's budget, for Heart of a Champion Summer Camp and allocate funding for 2025 to cover the months of July and August 2025.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, can you please open the vote? Can you please close? I'm sorry.
The motion fails four to three, with Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, Councilmember Caballero, and Councilmember Wrist voting no.
Thank you. We'll, at this point, we'll take a break. Colleagues, let's take a, let's take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at 9:31. Thank you.
I came to the city looking for a new challenge in my career. I stayed for the growth opportunities, work-life balance, and impact my work has on the community. The city of Durham, where careers meet community. To connect with a career that serves the whole city, visit durhamnc.gov/careers.
All right, let's start bringing it back. I'm ready too. Ready to get started. I lost my counsel. Councilmember Caballero, you see it in council members. Let them know we're ready. Thank you. We are ready to get started. All right, we'll go. I need a quorum. Oh, I have one, two, three, four. Okay. All right. It's 22, right? Yep. All right, we are now on item 22, our first study case for tonight. And I'll now hear the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, all the council members. Aaron Kane with the Planning Department. Before I begin, staff would like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law. And affidavits of all notices are on file in the Planning Department. A request for a utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning has been received from Patrick and Rebecca Cates for one parcel of land and right-of-way totaling 2.8 acres and located at 2625 Farrell Road. The annexation petition is non-contiguous to the primary corporate limits and would create a new satellite. The applicant intends to construct a single-family house on the property and access water and sewer services. The properties are currently designated existing residential on the place type map. The proposed residential suburban 20 zoning is generally consistent with the designated place type. If the proposed zoning is approved, there will be no change to the place type designation. As part of the annexation petition, the applicant is not seeking a change in the underlying zoning district. The property is currently undeveloped, and the current zoning would permit a single-family home. The zoning and size of the parcel would allow for additional single-family dwellings on the site. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request on a 10-to-0 vote at its March 18, 2024 meeting. Thank you, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. With the new PA voice, we noticed it. Colleagues, you've heard the staff report. Are there any questions for staff?
Just a one, and it's unrelated. I do want to go back to item 25, and I know we moved on, but I did want to just make sure that the framing was correct because the summer camp item didn't just come the night of city council meeting. There was actually a number of meetings where the conversation was ongoing. And so I just wanted to make a point to clarify the framing around that because it's not just, it wasn't just a last-minute thing. It actually came to us similarly with the community request in the same manner with the presentation. And I just actually advocated for it. That was all. Thank you.
Any questions for staff regarding this agenda item?
Yes.
Good evening. So I watched this on the Planning Commission, and I've read sort of the impact statements that are provided. Generally, we are straying away from satellites. This one does appear to be relatively a significant distance from the border. Could you just speak to the impacts and what staff sort of recommends around contiguous properties?
Uncontiguous, yes.
Yes, thank you.
So generally, we do try to stay away from satellites. What's happened in this situation is that there are a number of properties surrounding this one that have already had water and sewer supplied to them. They are not within the corporate limits, but they do already have water and sewer access. This particular parcel had to do a recombination, had to buy some land and therefore create a new lot in order to be able to access the existing sewer line. That made them ineligible to apply for access to water and sewer without annexation. So it's making them go through the annexation process.
Very quick question. Can you explain the impact, and I know that we have the cost-benefit analysis here, of other services, police, fire, trash pickup, those kinds of things?
Well, so by being part of the city, they would be eligible for all those services. So they'd be solid waste, police, fire, and so forth that other surrounding properties would not have access to since they are not part of the interior limits. I can't speak to exactly the costs of each of those, of each of those services and the cost to each of those departments. However, based on the analysis done by Budget and Management Services, it is... You got it pulled up here?
Sorry. Good evening, Sarah Young with the Planning Department. The memo does include a breakdown of costs for fire, police, as I'm scrolling, public works indicates no additional cost for them, solid waste, and transportation. So those numbers are on pages four and five of the cover memo.
So it's possible we might find a situation where trash trucks are driving all the way through the county to get to this one parcel. They call the police department is driving all the way across the county to get to this one parcel.
That is certainly a potential situation in this case, yes.
I would just like to add a little to what has been said so far regarding the cost benefit and the interplay between the departments that respond to the applications and how that translates into additional costs for the department. It is a combination of what the Planning Department, you know, puts before those departments in terms of where the location is. And the departments that have to actually serve it are the departments that calculate those costs. And then when you see the attachment that actually shows the cost benefit, it is over a period, you will see from 2023 to 2024 to 2032, 2033, so that it can actually, you know, cash flow in terms of the additional costs, both operating and capital investments over that time, over that time period, offset by the revenues. So it is a combination of an operation department actually evaluating the additional costs and the Budget Management Services Department incorporating those costs as the project matures.
Okay. So is it, so we find this consistent with comprehensive plan policies?
It's not consistent in terms of it being a satellite annexation. It is consistent in terms of it, the cost-benefit analysis showing a positive revenue over the lifespan of the analysis.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, well, this is a public hearing. I will now open this, I will now declare this public hearing open. I don't have any speakers. We have the applicant here tonight. I don't think so, actually. No. Do they need to?
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for hearing us. My name's Rebecca Cates. This is my husband, Patrick Cates. Do you have any questions for us?
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, colleagues. Good evening. Are you a large multinational development firm?
No, I'm a mother of seven. That's it.
What is it you want to build here?
Just a single-family home.
Thank you.
Create generational wealth.
I think one of the things, and this is actually one of those cool moments where you can kind of peel down, under-process, actually, and talk about folk. I think one of the reasons why this is always almost non-controversial is because it's precisely not the type of thing we're concerned about. And that's been, in some folks' assessment, deleteriously affecting the fabric of our city. This is single, the Planning Commission, I think, got it right, the direct translational zoning. Rarely, I don't think there's ever been any controversy around these. Once upon a time, we didn't even, the Planning Commission didn't even hear these cases. They just did a resolution about direct translational. But I think statutory changes now require them to hear them. But it was 10-0. I understand why, I understand why it's always been the case with these small parcels and private residents that we try and help out in our city and our county. So thank you. I look forward to supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other colleague? All right. This is the public hearing. Is there any other comments? Yes.
Yeah, I will be supporting, I think, I will be supporting this case just, I think for me, there has hesitancy is around the satellite annexation, which, and you look at the map and you look at where the sewer and the water is, it makes sense, they can tap in, I get it. But on the six years, or seven years, I guess, in my seventh year, you know, you're pretty much like, don't do the satellite annexations. So I think that that's some hesitancy, at least from me. It was good to see that Planning Commission voted for it unanimously. Appreciate the staff analysis on cost of the city. And here it is, when you're annexed to the city, you are a city resident, you pay extra property taxes. So even if that cost analysis is a little wonkier off, their taxes will be increasing because they're now going to be, if approved, they would be city residents. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
All right, well, oh, Councilman...
Just one more comment, Mr. Mayor, just because we deal with these resounding issues a lot. You know, and I'm also, I'm the city's representative on both the Jordan Lake One Water Advisory Committee as well as the Upper Neuse River Basin Association. One, in addition to turbidity, we talked about a lot in the meetings, we also track bacteria in the water. And one of the best ways not to have bacteria in our water is to have families on water and sewer, not septic. So I think it's a great, I think the more we do this, the better we are in protecting our streams and lakes from bacteria. So thank you as well.
It's definitely been a long road. I've worked endlessly for probably three years trying to...
Well, I like when people get on city water because of what you just said. Look forward to supporting it. Yep. This is a speaker card. This is a speaker card. I need you all to fill, well, I need you to fill one of these out just so I can have it on in my documents, okay?
Yes, sir.
Just see the clerk right over there.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Councilmember Baker.
Yeah, no, I'm going to be supporting this as well. It just is, it's surprising to look at the map and see, you know, a dot that's so far away from the city. And I think it speaks to the awkward situation that the state legislature has put municipalities in in not being able to proactively annex land and have to rely on voluntary annexations because then inevitably we see leapfrog annexations and sort of islands sticking out there. And those can pose some challenges as they add up. So that was the question, that was the motivation behind my question. And as you can see, we have to make difficult decisions based on the position that the state legislature has put us in the past. But I will, I will be supporting this.
Thank you. See, it's not you, it's the General Assembly. All right. All right. Colleagues, I will now declare this public hearing closed and back before the council. There are no other comments. I will entertain a motion to conduct, no, to adopt an ordinance annexing Kate's estate into the City of Durham and to authorize the city manager to enter to a utility, into a utility extension agreement with Patrick and Rebecca Cates.
Moved as read.
Second.
Been moved and property seconded. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And motion two, to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the residential suburban 20 Falls, Jordan Lake Watershed, overlay District B, county jurisdiction, and establishing the same as residential suburban 20 Falls, Jordan Lake Watershed, overlay District B, city jurisdiction.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and property second. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote. All right, and...
And again, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And motion three, to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina general statute, such section 160D-605.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and property second. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Congratulations to the Kate family. Have a good night. All right. Moving on. Number 23. Consolidated zoning map change, Fox Crossing 2.
Two.
All right. How many do I have?
Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, and the Honorable Councilmember.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yeah. Okay. You can go ahead.
Okay. A request for a zoning map change has been received from Tim Cybers of Cunyty for three parcels of land totaling 25.565 acres and located at 734 South Miami Boulevard, 1220 Lynn Road, and 101 Spring Street. The current zoning is residential urban 5. The applicant proposes to change this designation to planned development residential 12.750 with a textual development plan. The applicant is proposing to rezone the properties to allow up to 320 apartment units, with at least 3%, at least 5% of the units being designated as income restricted and between 2,000 to 7,000 square feet of commercial and/or public and civic use. The properties are currently designated mixed-use neighborhood on the place type map. The proposed PDR 12.750 zoning is generally consistent with the place type. The Planning Commission recommended denial on a 7 to 6 vote at its February 13, 2024 meeting. Since that meeting, the applicant has increased the percentage of income restricted units from 3 to 5%. Thank you, and staff and the available, or staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. You've heard the staff report. Colleagues, are there any questions? Yes. Councilmember Cook.
Hey.
Hello. I saw on here that we've got, I was looking at the comprehensive plan policy consistency statement on the zoning change report. Have those numbers shifted at all? Because I know that there was some change in the proffers during the Planning Commission.
There was. I don't believe they did. But I can double-check and get back to you.
I didn't think any of them were. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions before we open the public hearing for staff? All right. I will now declare this public hearing open and have the applicant. How much time do you think you need?
Probably 10 minutes.
All right. Madam Clerk, please put an hour on it. No, 12 minutes.
I'm pulling up a presentation. Oh, that's not enough. And good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, and members of the City Council. I am Neil Gosh, an attorney with the Morningstar Law Group at 700 West Main Street. And tonight, I'm representing KDM Development out of Raleigh. We also have our traffic engineer, Nate Boquen of McAdams, and Tim Cybers, our site engineer with Cunyty. Kenyon Burnham and Peter Crosson of KDM Development also are with us tonight. And for what it's worth, KDM Development is the market rate developer for the Cub Creek Mixed Income Multifamily Development in Bragtown, which is partnering with Ted Halbrun, Kelly Development, which is the low-income housing tax credit developer for that project in Bragtown. So this is their first project in Durham. I hope everyone on City Council has had a chance to visit the site, Fox Crossing 1, Phase 1. I'm happy to report that Phase 1 will be opening soon for new residents, providing 168 much-needed new apartment homes for Durhamites on the south side of Lynn Road. Our KDM Development team is proud of the curb appeal and the build quality that you can see here with Fox Crossing Phase 1. And we hope to continue that with Phase 2, which is the 25 and 1/2 acre site we're considering tonight for rezoning. For the record, our team does want to, you know, we'll just touch on, I guess, the, where Fox Crossing fits into the section of Durham. Sorry about that. I have been in Durham my whole life, and I've been working on development projects in our region for more than a decade. And during that time, it's kind of amazed me how in the Triangle region, it has kept expanding to kind of further out areas of Wake County, like Holly Springs and Zebulon, while the four or five miles that separate downtown Durham from RTP remained essentially undeveloped or underdeveloped. And fortunately, I think that's no longer the case. Durham has, over the last few years, developed or redeveloped some of that, you know, two, three-mile stretch from Durham Tech south to RTP. So on this slide, you can see Skanel Properties Regional Commerce Center on the west side of Durham Freeway. And of course, there's Durham Tech. And they've been a tremendous community resource for our residents for many years. And Durham Tech is only about two miles away from Fox Crossing. In addition, we are, Morningstar, I should say, is working on the annexation for Palmer Edge Life Science and Light Manufacturing Business Park, which is shown here in yellow. That site is already zoned industrial light, so it's just an annexation. And we hope that development will bring good-paying jobs to the section of Durham as well. And for the past year or so, I have been working on the team for a very dense mixed-use community called Brickworks. You can see it there in blue, 1,800 units roughly, with roughly 50,000 square feet of non-residential space possible there. You know, so ultimately, Fox Crossing Phase 2, and along with Phase 1, is kind of a great infill development that I think substantially and successfully fills in the gap between downtown and RTP. Given the job training and opportunities that are nearby and will be nearby, I think it makes sense to increase the potential number of apartments on this 25 and 1/2 acre site. Currently, the zoning would allow for 217 units by right, and we are seeking to increase that to 320 units. And as you can see, this property does present some challenges. It's got a 200-foot stream buffer for Lick Creek and 68-foot wide Duke Energy easement that crisscrossed the property. In addition, it's important to highlight that we are following the relatively new place type map, which I think wisely designated this area, you know, near the East End Connector on the north and east, and, you know, as a mixed-use neighborhood. This project, in addition to the multifamily component, has committed to providing at least 2,000, and I believe up to 7,000 square feet of commercial or civic space on the site. Now, since the Planning Commission, we took the feedback there. We also had another neighborhood meeting after the Planning Commission, and we've taken the feedback from that meeting and added some commitments to our project based on the input there. You know, we have eliminated some uses from the PDR, the ones here, clubs and lodges, wireless communication facilities, drive-through facilities, convenience store with gasoline sales. We also would add a commitment to handle a 100-year storm. And, uh... And I did want to address one other item that came up in, I guess, both the Planning Commission and the neighborhood meeting, which is the connection to Spring Street. And, well, to address that and, I guess, other traffic issues, I'll turn it over to our traffic engineer, Nate Boquen, for a minute, and I'll be back. Nate, if you want to just address that.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, and members of the City Council. My name is Nate Boquen. I'm the traffic engineering lead with McAdams, and I was the traffic engineer of record for Fox Crossing 2. My office address is 621 Hillsborough Street in Raleigh. I performed the traffic impact analysis for Fox Crossing 2. Based on my professional experience, we anticipate approximately 20% of the residential traffic from Fox Crossing 2 will use Spring Street, which is what you see pictured here. This distribution was reviewed and approved by NCDOT and city staff prior to the preparation of the TIA. I want to draw the City Council's attention to the fact that if we are fortunate enough to receive the approval for Fox Crossing 2, our team will construct a public turnaround at the end of Spring Street that will provide a dramatic improvement to public safety for this neighborhood. We will construct a circular bulb in compliance with City of Durham standards. This new bulb area will enable public services such as fire trucks, ambulances, and trash trucks, as well as delivery trucks, school buses, and the general public to turn around at the end of Spring Street, rather than trying to turn around in driveways or back out, or turn around in other ways, such as backing down the street that you see pictured here. Lastly, we performed traffic counts on Lynn Road as part of the TIA that was submitted with the Fox Crossing 2 rezoning. Based on those traffic counts, my professional opinion is that Lynn Road carries approximately 1,200 and 1,500 vehicles per day at this time. I also performed research relating to the traffic count on Lynn Road prior to the opening of the East End Connector. The traffic count taken by NCDOT in 2017 found that Lynn Road was carrying 3,200 vehicles per day at that time. Accordingly, the traffic count on Lynn Road has gone down by approximately 2,000 vehicles per day since the East End Connector opened. In coordination with NCDOT and city staff as part of the TIA process, the project team was also committed to constructing a left-turn lane at our access driveway on Lynn Road. While Spring Street's pavement width is not optimal based on modern city standards, the safety improvements described along with the reduction in traffic on Lynn Road since 2017 demonstrate that this rezoning is appropriate for these 25 acres we are considering tonight. Thank you, and I'll pass it back over to Mr. Gosh.
Thanks, Nate. And in closing, I think it's important to understand this rezoning request in the context of what could be done under the current zoning versus what the request would help achieve. As stated in the staff report, the current zoning would allow the property to be built for up to 217 apartments. And ultimately, what that means is that under either district or either scenario, the UDO is going to mandate a second point of access via Spring Street. So that aspect remains the same in either scenario. With this rezoning, we can achieve a greater density and a greater mix of uses than is allowed under the current zoning. The request also makes commitments to affordable housing, DPS, and the environment, none of which are required under the current zoning. And for what it's worth, we have increased the affordability duration from the 20 years that we presented at Planning Commission to 30 years. So really, every aspect of this request represents an improvement over the status quo. And for all of these reasons, we would respectfully ask for your approval. Our team is happy to answer any questions you may have, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. I am going to, I have some signups here. I'll start with my own line, folks. Did she see Melody come on? Melody Peters? Did she come on? Timothy Jones? Timothy Jones, can you hear me? Timothy Jones?
I can hear you.
Hey, great. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, and members of the council. My name is Tim Jones. I'm the homeowner of 819 Midway Avenue. My wife and I have owned this home and been residents of Durham County and the city since 2015. As business owners in our community, we can understand and appreciate your objective of welcoming and housing the influx of new residents to our city. And we appreciate your taking time to consider creative and varying housing solutions to the growing population. As homeowners in the area that Fox Crossing is planning to occupy, we care deeply about the plans for this neighborhood. I'd like you to ask you to find my address on the map attached to this agenda item. But unfortunately, you cannot find it because we were not considered in the planning efforts by Foxgate Crossing developers. Though we live less than half a mile from both entrances or proposed entrances to Foxgate 1 and 2, you will not find our address on that map. We understand from the Durham Comprehensive Plan that you have a goal of resident well-being, which is why I'm here tonight, we assume, to speak about my concerns. Foxgate Crossing 1 has not yet opened. Therefore, we do not yet know the real traffic ramifications of adding 170 units to our neighborhood. At this point, it's my understanding that Fox Crossing 2 plans to add an initial 321. If each of these apartments have two cars, we're looking at something around 980 travelers to our small neighborhood road each day. According to the traffic impact analysis just mentioned and published with these meeting notes, the intersections that impact us all receive C or worse grades currently, and these all descend E or F grades after the completion of the project. And unfortunately, the traffic analysis fails to consider Carter Avenue, which connects to Spring Street or Midway Avenue, both of which will be directly impacted by the proposed project. As a parent, it's frustrating to me that my elementary-aged children cannot safely check our mail due to the current existing traffic on Midway Avenue. Fox Crossing 1 has not opened yet, and the existing traffic is unsafe. What the traffic analysis fails to address is that many people avoid the intersections on Pleasant by taking Midway Avenue. Adding additional cars to our roads without significant investments to road infrastructure is dangerous to my family. We ask that you oppose this zoning change until such times the city or the developers can demonstrate good faith efforts to mitigate the anticipated traffic dangers with solutions such as a different entrance plan, speed bumps, sidewalk on Midway Avenue, Carter Avenue, and Pleasant. We trust that this council is dedicated to the safety and well-being of our children, homeowners in our small community, and elderly neighbors. We respectfully ask that you will take the time to drive to our neighborhood and see for yourselves what we are talking about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next, I have Donna Standback.
Yes.
Hey, dear. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and councilmembers. Just to note that only 13 of the 22 policies were met, comprehensive plan policies were met by this proposal. I am glad to see a couple of proffers made, but, um... And it's important to see that the neighbor all had another meeting. This, the businesses right now are, that are near within the 15-minute walking, are only, the transit's right at 15 minutes, and the Calvary Child and the Carolina Help Group. And so this proposal does not meet the 15-minute walk. They mention Wellens Village, but Wellens Village, using from Policy 50, of 10 minutes equals .5 miles, is over 50 minutes away. So this is mostly an automobile-accessible development in the middle of so much traffic. And some of these businesses that are mentioned in the proposal, I'm looking at the zone map change report, are across 885. And there are not any crossings, you know, for pedestrians in that manner. Concern was expressed as how this would be environmentally friendly as this was the headwaters of Little Lick Creek. This proposal has one vehicular and two utility string crossings, so three string crossings. Note, the sewer follows the creek bed. Is the creek bed disturbed by the sewer? That's a question, I guess, for Neil. So the other thing is, during construction, can we... I guess, for Neil. So the other thing is, during construction, can we, the applicant promise that there will not be any stormwater and tomato soup from the construction? I noticed he put the 100-year stormwater plan, but what we've been seeing is that so much of the damage is done during construction. I'm very concerned how the comprehensive plan policy, 94 of 25% tree canopy, being native trees, is called and exceed when the Policy 85 only has 7% trees for that.
Thank you, Ms. Stanback. Thank you so much. Next, I have Ms. Pam Williams. No? What about Melody Peters? Did she see them? Okay. All right. I'll now move to our in-person speakers.
Mr. Mayor, pardon. I see Pam Williams in queue and her hand is up. You see her, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Williams, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
There you go. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My internet is going in and out, so please bear with me. I'd like to add to what Tim Jones said earlier about the traffic analysis. The traffic analysis fails to include the current traffic on US 70 and Pleasant Drive. The current traffic on US 70, based on NCDOT traffic counts, is 45,300. As shown in the impact, traffic impact statement, it shows 39,500, which is a 2021 traffic count. The traffic has increased seven, over 7% each year in the last two years, and that's what makes up that 14% increase. So really, we have 45,000 vehicles on US 70. The same thing is true with Pleasant Drive. The traffic has increased 1,000 in the last two years, which is a 30% increase in the traffic. It was 4,000 in 2021 and now it's 5,000, right at 5,000 now. So I have concerns about the growth rate of 3% that was used in the traffic analysis. I also have concerns about the streets. The Spring Street is like, is only like 15, 16 feet. It doesn't even have pavement markings, nor does Carter Street. Midway does have pavement markings, but these are narrow roads. There is no continuous sidewalks in this area anywhere to get to anywhere. And also, to get to the other side of Andrew Avenue, there's a railroad track. So you're not going to be able to get from here over to the commercial development that Neil was talking about. You can't get to the park because it's on the other side of I-85. There are also two other developments, apartments. One's got 350 apartments at South Miami Boulevard that's been approved, that's in the same vicinity. Also, Andrew Avenue Apartments with 521. This area is really bombarded. So there's no real amenities around this. So it is auto-centric, as Donna said. I would like to also request a 100-foot undisturbed buffer along both sides of the creek. The utility plan is showing it parallel in the creek. I would like to ask that the utilities not be within the 100-foot buffer of the creek, especially since they're only showing 7% tree preservation. We need as much tree and grass coverage, existing tree and grass coverage as possible for runoff and to retain. This is headwaters of Little Lick Creek, where we also already have flooding downstream from it, and they just did the Grove Park Restoration Project to try to improve some of Little Lick Creek.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much and have a great evening.
We know each other well now. All right. She knows I tried to catch the break. All right. Now, Melody Peters, is there a Melody Peters in here? Oh, okay. There you go. She's online and in person.
Good evening.
Is she on your phone also? Oh, no, you went online. That's why.
I did. I just wanted to make sure I was heard.
You're thorough.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mayor and council members, for being here, for all the time you offer our city. I do know it is a public service and we are very grateful for your time and effort and staying and waiting and listening to us tonight. It is a very, very long night, but this matters greatly. In fact, I do want to point out that my house is on that picture that the lovely lawyer shown. I own that house at the end of Spring Street, on that lovely yellow house, built in 1929, the original farmer of Sharon Acres. I own 103 and 105, been a taxpayer 22 years in Durham, love Durham, Durham Public Schools, proud Durham School parent, and product of Durham Public Schools, and a public taxpayer. So please, I ask you to vote no in the rezoning. I ask you to vote no for the utility, okay? Because it matters. Your vote does matter. It matters to all of the people that have been here and waited. Some waited and couldn't keep waiting. Spring Street, I heard the lawyer say, it's not an optimal size, optimal was the word. There's no way, there's no way 400, 200, 300 apartment, traffic from those apartments can come and go down Spring Street safely. I can tell you that, right? Death will occur. It will not happen safely. And so just take in line, the traffic studies, the Es and the Fs surely to come. The water, Lick Creek, Lick Creek runs all through there. I brought a picture, but you've all seen it. All right. This blue right here, okay? This is Lick Creek. Lick Creek has been damaged for years. It's already getting Ds and Es and it's water, and we need to raise that. We have nowhere to go but F. So what are we going to do to make it better? All right? Please, Durham UDO needs strong protection for our creek and our waterways in Durham. Please require developments to do turbidity sampling of their discharges so they don't continue pumping dirty water into our creeks. I cannot tell you, water is life, and I love all the celebrations we did tonight. Durham Water is so wonderful. Lick Creek goes into Falls Lake. Falls Lake is not our drinking water, but it is somebody's. It is Wake County. All right? Please. Also, I would love just to ask, I'd love to ask for every developer, every tree you cut down, I want you to plant one in its place. Because when I look at this map and this orange, it should all be green. It should all be green. We need green space in Durham. We need smart development. I want affordable housing like everybody else, but I don't want it in a high-traffic area where there is not safe walkways, not safe buildings, not a community center. We do need affordable housing, but we need it in a different place. Please, I'm asking you tonight, we may get Es and Ds and Es, but do not fail the citizens of Spring Street and Pleasant Road and Sharon Acres community. Thank you.
All right. Paul? Paul Joffrin? When you get, state your name, make sure I respect it with the pronounced, appropriate pronunciation.
Joffrin.
Joffrin.
I have a slideshow to bring up. This Fox Crossing presentation is still on screen, so.
Madam Clerk, you can wait until you get its presentation up?
Oh, by all means, thank you. The toggle between slides. There you go. Do I just?
You can just press the down button. That should.
And go up and down? Okay. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, city manager, city attorney, thank you. My name is Paul Joffrin, 49 years a resident of Durham. And for the past 23 years with my wife, Patricia Sykes, a resident of 705 Pleasant Drive, just 300 yards from the proposed Lynn Road access of Fox Crossing 2. As others have said, these streets are tiny. This is Spring Street, which is the proposed second access for Fox Crossing 2. This is the 200 block, two cars with bends to the side, do not have a lot of room to pass one another. This is the width of Fox Crossing, excuse me, Spring Street, close to the 100 block with the car stretched across, one car at the more narrow 100 block of Spring Street. And the end of Spring Street actually is a neighborhood recreational location. This gentleman and his father enjoyed speaking with them and getting their permission for this picture. Pedestrian safety has come up tonight. This is the intersection of Midway. We had a speaker from 815 Midway earlier. Midway and Lynn Street, no shoulders, no curbs, no sidewalks. A pedestrian walking, if they have to leave the street quickly, have a three-foot drop into a drainage ditch with stone for drainage. Let me go forward a moment. Pedestrian safety, this stop sign, I took this picture on February 17th of this year. It is the second time this stop, excuse me, speed limit sign has been mowed over. It was previously replaced two months prior to this. On April 13th, there was an accident three miles to our west on 885, backing traffic up completely back over the East End Connector. Individuals sought a cut through, and this is Lynn Road backed up to Highway 70. This is Pleasant Drive backed up between 70 and Andrew Avenue. It took these cars 45 minutes to an hour to get what they thought was going to be a 10 to 15-minute cut through. Backups like that don't happen often, but this is another picture of the same stretch, three accidents within minutes of each other, three days following that backup on these two corridors. On the right-hand side is Highway 70, on the left-hand side is 885. In the middle, it's hard to see, is Andrew Avenue. Daily afternoon, you see red streaks, totally disproportionate with the rest of Durham. The Andrew Avenue and Highway 70 landlocked, Sharon Acres neighborhood, Spring Street, Lynn Road, there is no way out except by way of Pleasant Drive, Andrew, and Highway 70 unless you take the trip to Wellens Village, which is not the destination a lot of people are going for work and other purposes. I have so much more to say and my time is running out. I'll be happy to take questions. I invite questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Melody Peters again. Okay. You're really thorough. I see. You're also taking up space for other people who want to sign up, so I'm going to get you. John Curry. She made sure I wasn't going to miss her.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, my name is John Curry. We're not lawyers. We just concern citizens and taxpayers. I live at 1222 Lynn Road. My family has lived here continuously and paid taxes for over 84 years. Fox Crossing 1 is directly across the road from my house. Their exit is directly across from my driveway. Potentially 336 cars will be added to the traffic problem on our narrow road. Fox Crossing 2 would be next door to my home with their main entrance just 75 yards from my driveway. 640 additional cars could be added to our small community. Fox Crossing 1 is about finished, and anyone who lives on Lynn or Pleasant Drive would tell you that 336 additional cars added to the already heavy traffic would cause havoc. To consider another 640 cars to the problem is just beyond reason. I'm basing the number of vehicles on two per apartment. This small community would be absolutely overwhelmed by this great number of vehicles. Any reasonable person could see that 320 or more apartments with all their vehicles is certainly not a good fit for our community. Whatever the, we're not stupid, but we realize that the developers don't care about what happens to us once they build their buildings. Since I have some time left, I want to talk about the creek. The headwaters is at Spring Road and Carter Avenue. I've lived in this community all my life, and fresh water runs into that creek. And it's the last refuge for the animals that are now in Wesley Downs across the highway that's already been approved. They can come under the highway to this section, but if this development goes forward, they would have nowhere to go except the East End Connector. There's all kinds of wildlife in those woods, deer, all kinds of aquatic life in the creek, and I'd hate to see all of that ruined. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last card I have is Adam Gross.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. This is my first city council meeting. I sent all of the members of city council, as well as the mayor, an email with a petition. I learned about this very recently, unfortunately. It seems like, as the developer described it, they're trying to fill in a gap, and we seem to be that gap. So I'd actually like to speak to the community members that I spoke to who were unable to make it tonight, like Ms. Wanda, who had to leave early, who's had a lot of issues with this developer. They're trying to move a light pole back onto her house. They've had issues with storage in her backyard. I'm sure she would have spoke to that. I met a new, a young mother on the corner of Carter Avenue, just bought her first home with her family. She's worried about the speed. People already speed through our neighborhood quite often. Her children play in that street. I mean, I live on Pleasant Drive between Spring Street and Lynn Road. There is a whole group of kids in the houses behind mine that play in that street. I met the Justice family, who've lived on Spring Street for generations. They have their elderly father who walks every morning down Spring Street to the corner and back. I was able to talk to him on Saturday. That man is 40% blind, and I had to hold the pen over to where he could sign his name onto that petition. I met an older working gentleman who works evenings and was unable to be here tonight. He told me two words. He said, "Why wasn't I told and how could they do this?" We've heard a lot about traffic. We've heard about how it's been getting better. It has not. The entire community, every single member of this community that I talked to said the traffic is already bad enough. We do not need this and we do not want it. I do not see how a cul-de-sac will widen a road or get people to slow down. I strongly oppose this, and I think that this marginalized community in a poor neighborhood in East Durham should not be overlooked one more time. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. And good job. It's your first time speaking. Those are all of the speakers I have. Mr. Gosh, do you have rebuttal?
Sure. Just quickly, I want to address a couple of things that were said. It's important to understand that this project is, ultimately, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's how it was laid out in the staff report. And one of the reasons, you know, I think it was mentioned a couple of times, this doesn't meet the 15-minute walk. I mean, that's what the mixed-use neighborhood designation allows you to do, create housing next to goods and services, and this project does both. And so it might be true that you can't walk somewhere within 15 minutes of A, but you, that's what this project would actually implement is housing next to goods and services that you could walk to within 15 minutes. That's one of the ways to implement the mixed-use neighborhood place type that is outlined in the comprehensive plan. On that, I also just want to mention, I don't have the verbiage in front of me, and I didn't see it specifically outlined in the staff report, but the guidance in the comprehensive plan for the place type, for the mixed-use neighborhood place type, says specifically, or suggests specifically, that this mixed-use neighborhood designation is appropriate in undeveloped or underdeveloped areas near established neighborhoods and on the outskirts of the city. That's what this is. So there was a lot of talk about So there was a lot of talk about the lack of infrastructure in the, in the established neighborhoods and things like that. And I, and I don't disagree that those things exist. However, I think the lack of adequate infrastructure and historic development shouldn't act as a bar for new development that is guided by and in line with the goals and guidance in the comprehensive plan. I, I can understand, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, it is possible that the comprehensive plan and development that is consistent with the comprehensive plan is not always going to be consistent with previous and historic development, and there may be a good reason for that. And that, and that, and maybe that's the case here. But ultimately, the Phase 1 apartments are built on one side of the road. Phase 2, that's what's being proposed here on the other side of the same street. And, you know, Durham is in need of housing and the, in my opinion, the way to get that housing is through density. This project provides density, you know, apartment-style density in, in area that I would argue we can ill, you know, we, we can, we as a city cannot really afford to continue to develop things at, at lower and lower densities. So, you know, I think this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan as outlined in the staff report. It provides more density than the current zoning allows. And also, for what it's worth, the traffic study, I think the counts were done last year? Yeah, so, I mean, the, the counts are what they are. I, I think there are some published numbers from '21, but the counts for the traffic study were done last year, so they're a little bit more accurate than I think maybe the speaker had suggested. Look forward to getting your feedback, answering your questions, and thank you for your time tonight.
Colleagues, any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I always have questions and I usually go first, so I'll just...
Sometimes you're yes and nope. Always look the same.
Fine. Okay, I am gonna start with a staff question. So our, our traffic assessment is this project as compared to current. Fox Crossing 1 has not opened yet. I looked for the June 2020 analysis for Fox Crossing 1, I did not find it. Do you, do we have an idea of what that analysis looked like at that time? Do we have an idea of what traffic increase we're looking at with Fox Crossing 1 in addition to Fox Crossing 2?
In addition to Fox, so usually, and I think Sean Egan may be available online remotely, usually when a TIA is done and reviewed, approved projects are incorporated into the traffic numbers. So assuming that's the, that's the case here, then Fox Crossing 1, since it was approved project at the time, the TIA was done, would have been incorporated and at least a model of that background traffic would have been included in the assumptions.
So when I am looking at the potential impact of proposed designation, that is assuming that Fox Crossing 1 has already opened and is already working?
It is assuming that at some point, yes, Fox Crossing 1 is open. And again, if Sean's available remotely, he can confirm that.
Online.
He's on, okay, great. But that's, that's usually how that works, yes. So it would be included.
Good evening. This is Sean Egan, Director of Transportation. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council. There is a traffic impact analysis memo included in your packet. It notes approved developments and background growth. There are seven approved developments in the vicinity of this area. On all of those, all of the traffic impacts of those seven developments, the first one on the list is Fox Crossing 1, but all of the traffic impacts of those seven developments have been incorporated into the traffic analysis for this proposal.
Thank you, Sean. I mean, I guess my, my question, or the thing that I'm trying to understand is if we are assuming the, the impact as though these developments, which are approved, have already opened, but we also very much know that Fox Crossing 1 has not opened yet as per the presentation that was just given. I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding how to look at these numbers and make them useful. So we have this, this added impact, but we haven't actually seen that impact, so we just have numbers. We don't know what that is gonna look like. That sounds right?
We, we do not have actual counts at this time. We would simply have to base the projections on the models that we run.
Thank you. Can I get the traffic person up? Sorry. I wrote your name down, but I forgot it. Sorry, could you introduce yourself one more time? And, and then I went to hear, you went very quickly through your report, so if you could slow down just a little bit for me. I, my understanding was 20% of this traffic will use Spring Street, the other 80% we're looking at the exit off of Lynn. That is in combination with Fox Crossing 1, which also uses Lynn as its main entrance? No. Did you just clarify these streets for me one more time?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So introduce myself again. My name's Nate Boekwinkle, Traffic Engineer with McAdams. So the Fox Crossing 1 project will have both an entrance off Lynn as well as an entrance off Pleasant. And so they'll have the, the two different points of access for that, that project. I believe they're set up where Pleasant is kind of the, the main, the main access for, for Fox Crossing 1, where they've constructed a, a left-turn lane for that project as well. And so, yeah, like you mentioned, 20% would, was the assumption that we used in our, our traffic study based on coordination with city staff as well as NCDOT for, for what we conservatively had estimated would utilize Spring Street and that other 80% would utilize the, the access off Lynn for Fox Crossing 2. And if I could also just answer your, your earlier question a little bit more. So the, the TIA looks at three different scenarios. The existing analysis scenario truly is just based on the traffic counts. Then we project that volume out into the future. That's when we add in those, those seven adjacent developments, as well as a 3% annual growth rate up to our build-out year. That's what we call the, the no-build scenario. That's kind of our, our baseline for what the future would be like without, without this project. And then we add in the, the site traffic for this project as well. That way we're able to get kind of an apples-to-apples comparison of what our impacts are and how we would potentially impact intersections in the future.
So do we have, we have an understanding of, I know, okay. I understand Pleasant is the main entrance and exit of Fox Crossing 1. Do we have an understanding of the impact on Lynn from Fox Crossing 1? Is that something that you would know?
It would have been in the Fox Crossing 1 TIA.
I'm interifying it, yeah.
I don't have that TIA up in, in front of me at the moment, but that would have been captured in our no-build analysis scenario.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I have some questions for the developer, to everyone. So I watched the planning commission, which you were not present for, this, this proposal. It was late, things were silly, but some things came up that I would like to just readdress.
Sure.
The first one is that several of the commissioners asked for a more specific narrowing of the non-residential. So they talked about that 2 to 7K being a pretty large range and also, and I know we've, you talked a little bit about this in your presentation, about narrowing down the use. So do, do you have any more specifics since the planning commission on size of that non-residential?
I mean, the size hasn't changed. We're still, we, on the development plan, it's still a minimum of 2,000, a maximum of 7,000. We, just to be clear, we do not have a user outline for that, so like, we don't know what the use is. We've obviously eliminated certain uses from the, you know, possibility there, but the size is, is still in that 2,000 to 7,000 square foot range.
Okay. And we're not able to narrow that down at all?
Well, here, let's, yeah, go ahead.
It's all right with you all. Hi, guys. Kenyon Burnham with KDM Development, 8480 Honeycutt Road in Raleigh. So part of the reason we try not to narrow down our, the size of a commitment too much on a retail user on a project like this is a lot of times our end-user, whether that be a cafe or a diner or something to that effect, that ends up wanting to take that space, is going to have some sort of prerequisite requirements that they'll want for that space. So you may have a coffee shop, for example, that comes in and they want to be in a space that's 4,500 square feet and, you know, I've committed to not putting more than 4,000 on the site and that eliminates the possibility for that particular user. So it's more about the, kind of the backend ability to actually fill that space when we go to build it out and kind of creating a little bit more flexibility in that build pursuit while also making some commitments to certain uses that I think the neighbors had concerns with, making those, you know, prohibited under our classifications.
Right. So we haven't done any restrictions outside of the prohibited list. There's not, we don't have a priority list. I understand the difficulties of not being able to put something in before the roofs are there. I do understand that, but we don't have a priority list, because, I mean, the, the things that have been suggested are like in all three of these categories, right? It's like, maybe it's a daycare, or maybe it's a coffee shop, or, you know, or maybe it's a WeWork, right? It's, it just feels like all of these, it could be anything. And the reason I'm asking is because we, we're talking about 15-minute neighborhoods and, and it's hard for us to think about and conceptualize what a 15-minute neighborhood looks like if we don't know what's going in, right? It's just a difficulty. And I understand the limitations there, but that's the reason for my questions. Another thing that came up at the planning commission was Commissioner Stees asking about widening the buffer. I think he specifically said that he doesn't normally care about buffers all that much, but this piece of land felt particularly sensitive, given that it was the Lit Creek headwater. Have y'all had any conversation about that?
I mean, so the site, not about widening the buffer, I mean, we're, we are respecting and providing the buffer, I believe it's a 100-foot buffer on both sides, so it ends up being a 200-foot buffer on the site, the way the, the stream lays out on the site.
And I think I heard you say this before, but I just want to make sure, did you say that you were extending the, the income restricted housing from 20 to 30 years?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I heard that. And then my last question is, why only 25% native trees? This is like a, a large piece of forested land and...
So that, the, I think the commitment, and I'll look to Tim, there's a 7% tree preservation commitment, which is different than the commitment for native plantings. The native plantings are additional plantings that are required for landscaping, and so that was where the 25% of the additional landscaping would be native trees. And, and I, and I, I think we are happy to say all of those trees would be native for, for additional landscaping, but that is, that is, just to be clear, that's landscaping that's separate from the tree preservation that's already committed to.
I understand that. Yeah, I just thought it, I mean, we've just been seeing lots of folks talk about 100% native trees and I was just surprised to see 25%, so.
Yeah, so I think the commitment generally is that we would use native trees where the Durham landscape manual allows for required plantings.
Okay. I don't have any further questions at this time. There you are. Thanks.
Councilmember Baker.
Got a few questions for staff, a few questions for the developer. First question for staff is just, is the, does the MT, does the major transportation overlay apply here?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I'll double-check the staff report, but I don't believe so.
Okay. I was just curious because it directly abuts limited access roads.
Yes, but when the MTC buffer was created, 885 didn't exist, and so it has not been placed on 885 since.
Oh, 885, yeah, right. Okay. Is that something that's on our radar? Is that something that we're thinking of, of applying?
It, it has not come up in previous conversation, but it's something, certainly something we...
We take a look at that?
You can take a look at it, absolutely.
Let's see. I guess as a follow-up quickly to you, what kind of buffer are you looking at directly adjacent to the freeway?
I mean, the, the required landscape buffer, which in this case would be, I believe, a 30-foot required landscape buffer.
30-foot?
Yep.
I only, I only ask because, of course, noise, pollution from, from limited access freeways are, have pretty major impacts, so I was just curious about that. Let's see. I'm gonna go ahead and move to questions to the developer. So affordable housing, let me just make sure I'm, I'm clear. 5% of the proposed units at 80% area median income or below for 30 years, is that currently the commitment?
That's correct, yep.
We've been seeing 6 to 10% in market rate rezoning cases. In some cases, that's also going down to 60% area median income. Do you have any interest in making that kind of commitment?
Yes, we looked at the 60% AMI and KDM, they didn't feel they could make that work on this project. I don't know if, Kenyon, you want to speak to that?
So part of it, just speaking frankly to y'all, part of it comes down to, you know, and I think I made this statement in some private conversations as well, leading up to this, that, you know, we're happy to come in and put all sorts of, you know, conditions and, you know, affordable commitments into our projects. It's, what I'm also trying to make sure I can do on the backend is go out and get a loan to finance this when it comes time to build it. The present environment, you know, is not fantastic for any kind of multifamily construction. I'm sure you guys have heard that statement before, but it is, it is certainly exceptionally difficult as it stands currently to get a construction loan to build a project, a multifamily project, really anywhere in the country, but, you know, it, we are certainly seeing it here in the Triangle and Durham. So, you know, we're trying to, speaking frankly, trying to create a project that we feel very confident that when we get through this process, we continue to move forward and go to build this asset one day, we're able to get that bank loan we need to, to build the project, just speaking honestly to you. In a different environment, we have, you know, more flexibility, but in today's market, it's, it's, it's difficult. Just trying to get a straightforward answer on that as best I can.
We've been seeing some developers recently making commitments to, to green building. For example, with, with Language Committed that says all primary buildings shall, shall meet NGBS, National Green Building Standards, silver or gold certifications, that's something that you would be interested in making commitment to?
Yeah, so me personally, I'm not particularly well-versed in a lot of those standards. I will say, we do qualify for quite a few energy tax credits as our projects are currently constructed. Our assets are actually surprisingly a lot more efficient than I think most people realize. You know, we just recently ran an analysis based on our energy efficiency on a project we're building with identical specs in Charlotte and qualified for, I have to speak a little bit, probably get a little more detail on that, but it was, yeah, Energy Star certification for, so we'd be happy to commit to an Energy Star certification on this asset as well. It's something that, you know, is, is easily attainable for us on, on these assets. And we do actually, and we do it as well because we, we do actually care about trying to make sure our assets are efficient and energy, energy certified is something that KDM does, it does matter to us. So that's something we're doing anyways. We're happy to kind of formalize that into a condition as well, that, if that's something you can loan.
Okay. Does that work for staff?
That's fine.
Okay. Let's see. There were a number of comments from BPAC and I think typically we have responses in the staff report to those comments. Is there a reason why we don't have responses, just because the developer didn't provide responses?
Yeah, so we provide those comments from BPAC to the, the applicant and it is, you know, we will provide those responses back to you if we receive any.
Okay, got it, got it. Did you all see the BPAC comments?
Yes. And for some of them, well, let me say, I saw them now, like, since the planning commission, I suppose. But some of them are, are things that are already going to be taken care of, so number one, like include sidewalk within the development footprint connecting Spring and Lynn, that ultimately is required under the UDO, so there's not a commitment to be made there. Ensure the sidewalk connection and high-visibility pedestrian crossing with ADA-compliant ramps between residential areas and secondary retail. This is a text, a textual development... retail. This is a text, a textual development plan. We don't necessarily, I mean, I, we can't really speak to that at, at the moment, where those things will exist on the site, and whether they'll be, how, how they will be integrated. It's not that anyone is fundamentally opposed to this or anything like that, but it just, I mean, the request, I think, is a little bit open-ended in a way that we didn't feel we could make that type of a commitment.
Staff, is that, would that not just be required? Comment number two from BPAC?
The high-visibility portion of it. ADA compliance, absolutely.
ADA, ADA compliance.
The high visibility.
It's the high visibility, and-
Which is a difference.
We do not require in the UDO at this time.
Yeah, and, and the, the, kind of same thinking with the raised crosswalks. And I will say, what I have found in other projects that I have, you know, explored this on, there are scenarios where raised crosswalk is not appropriate. And I don't know if that is one of these scenarios or not. We're just not that far into the site plan or development side of this to know whether this will be an appropriate site or not. I think, in general, raised crosswalks, and I don't, I know I've had conversations with Erlynne, I don't see her, but, you know, raised crosswalks, or kind of keeping the, the pedestrian level at the same height or realm is, can be appropriate and achieved, I think, safely on, let's say, driveways, but not necessarily at like curb cuts for roads. And sometimes that is going to impede traffic in a way that makes it less safe. So, again, I think that kind of depends on the design stage of it. Building covered bicycle parking for residents, I don't know that we have discussed that specifically. Yeah, so, I mean, I don't, I don't have a direct response to that one. The, it, the other comment is that the application calls for sidewalk or multi-use path if DOT requests it, and they are encouraging DOT to request it, and we have committed to it if they do request it. And then, about the Go Durham future bus stop for Route 2 along Lynn Road, as far as I know, there is no such stop planned. There are stops along Anger that are, like, less than half a mile away from, from the site.
Box Cross?
Yeah. No, there's one at Box Cross, Phase 1. So, I don't know that there's another future Route 2 bus stop. That's not, when we looked up, that's not what we found.
Would you be open to making commitment around item number two from BPAC? And maybe we can add language of unless recommended otherwise by, by city staff, high-visibility pedestrian crosswalks?
I mean, sure, yeah. I, I don't, I don't see why that wouldn't-
Does that work?
That'll be fine, yeah.
We're just throwing the flexibility of unless city staff determines otherwise.
We could have that.
Subject to approval at times.
Subject to approval during the site plan stage, yes.
Yeah. And then, staff, this is, this is subject to the connectivity requirements, right?
You do have-
Yes.
Okay. That's it for me for right now.
All right.
Oh my God, okay. I actually, I'm good. I don't, I don't have any questions. Oh, are you gonna come back around when it's time for com, is this just questions? Are you gonna come back around to us?
Questions, comments, so just get the first round out. I'll come back around.
Okay, great.
I'll come back around.
I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman? Ruth?
I do have two questions. So, the first one is about this issue of stream crossings. And I'm looking at the, at the comprehensive plan policy review, this is like Policy 79. And I don't know if this is a question for staff or for the applicant. So it says, so this is Policy 79, protect Durham's most sensitive natural areas, et cetera. Policy not met. Proposal commits to limiting the project to one vehicular and two utility stream crossings. So just, just help me understand, so what's, so, and that's, that's what, this is what you propose, right? And that doesn't meet the policy? Just want to understand that a little better.
I, I think it's more about, in terms of meeting the policy, it's hard on these textual development plans, because we don't have a graphic. We can't see exactly where the stream crossing is going to be, where the building and parking envelope is and so forth. And so, just seeing, say, two, two utility crossings instead of one, it can be from the staff reviewer's point of view, that, well, maybe there could be a way to, to design this, or there'd be only one crossing, but without that graphic, it's, it's hard for us to determine, so.
Yeah, and just to respond to that, I mean, the, the way I would say it is, there is no way to develop this site consistent with the comprehensive plan for a mixed-use neighborhood without some stream crossings. And to get above the 100 units, we have to have, we have to loop the water line, which is why there are two utility stream crossings. We have, we have limited the number of vehicular stream crossings to one, which, again, to develop the site consistent with the comprehensive plan, you have to cross the street. There's no, there's no two ways about that.
Thank you. The second question, pull it up here, is about the, and again, I don't know if this is for staff or the consultant, but it's about this, the summary level of service data and the traffic impact analysis. I just want to make sure I understand that. So what, what you were describing earlier is that under the, I think this is page three, so under the no-build scenario, what this graph shows is that currently Pleasant Drive and Lynn Road, existing right now, have, have a B grade, right?
Sorry, let me pull up the one you're referring to.
Right, so let me go through all, so like, so, yeah, if you, so, it shows that start, let's start at the top. So US 70, South Miami Boulevard to Lynn Road, existing is like, in the AM is level C, PM is D, and then the no-build alternative, which is when all this, all these developments are built out, if I understand that correctly, shows that same corridor as D and E. So, level of service going down there, right?
Sorry, which intersection, you're looking at 70 and-
70, yeah, South Miami Boulevard and Lynn Road.
And Lynn, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, in the no-build, so depending on what type of intersection you're looking at, it's gonna be either an overall intersection delay, or it's gonna be a specific movement. A situation like this, your stop control is your only movement that would have any delay. So it'd be the stop control turning off of Lynn onto 70. In the no-build, you're correct, it would be a D in the AM, and an E in the PM. In the build condition, we would add six seconds of delay in the AM, which would technically trigger the E threshold, but it would be minimal, it was, it's tiptoeing the, the threshold already in the no-build condition. So we're, we're just adding the six, six seconds, and it's tripping it into the E. And then in the PM, it maintains the E, but it goes up six seconds as well.
And then, so for US 70, South Miami Boulevard and Pleasant Drive, that's the next scenario, shows existing in 2023, level of service D, AM and PM, and then again, no, no build, or the build in 2028 goes down to F and E for both of those, correct?
Yes, that, that's correct. And, and that's with the compounded growth, the 3% growth rate from 2023 up to 2028, as well as the seven adjacent developments that we've, we've added. That's, that is the, the no-build condition that you're looking at. And then with our, our build condition, is with our site traffic added in. To get an apples-to-apples comparison, we don't look at, at any sort of signal timing modifications, which is why there you see another scenario below it, which is when we modify the green times at the intersection, which DOT undertakes that every so often as development occurs anyway. And so with that, it would maintain an E in both the AM and the PM.
Okay. And then, thank you for that. So then, and the next scenario is Pleasant Drive and Lynn Road. And that shows under existing is like condition, is like graded B, right? And the, the no-build scenario, the same thing, is graded B. So that's, so there's, so that seems like that's a, at least what, what the data shows, is actually less impact, or less challenges with the, sort of like, the, the roads.
Yeah, very, very minor impacts at, at that intersection.
And so Pleasant Drive and Spring Street, again, shows level B for both the AM and PM and existing, and continues level B for the no-build.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I had. I have some comments later, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, colleagues. And thank you all for hanging in with us this evening. I want to say, at the outset, I, I think it's, it's kind of refreshing to be dealing with a case that actually does not expand our urban footprint. We're actually talking about rezoning within the urban tier. This is not an annexation, which I think raises, you know, the question of, of, and I think we're kind of touching on it tangentially, what, what does urbanization look like in a growing city? And how does that impact all neighborhoods in the city? And, because one of the challenges, and, and listen, in my own neighborhood, I'm dealing with, I have a single home in, in Durham. Where I live, Lumley Road is not that wide. We've approved apartment complexes on Miami. I know folk are gonna cut through Lumley to get, to the Page Road extension to get to 70, rather than go down Miami to 70. So I couldn't even, I couldn't insulate my own neighborhood from the impacts of growth and, and, and growth in an urban environment. So I, I think, and I appreciate some of the questions and concerns that my colleagues have brought up, about what does it look like? I don't know of any neighborhood in, within our urban tier, that at this point presents as perfect for this type of development. Every neighborhood in this city, and we've had some come, when we've done rezonings, it's, it's traffic, it's, it's the things that make cities, cities. And I just think, philosophically, the, the arguments that we hear sometimes to keep rural rural can't possibly be interchangeable with infill development or doing urban expansion. They, they, they can't all be interchangeable. On the one hand, you're, you want to preserve a bucolic kind of peaceful environment. On the other hand, you're trying to put people in, you know, decent places to live in a growing urban footprint. They, they can't be interchangeable. I, I do have a question, because I, I read the Planning Commissioner comments. One of the votes seemed to hinge, by the Commissioner's own admission, on, on, I don't know how to say, your attitude, more so than a substantive concern. One of the Commissioners said that my vote was mainly about a sense of inevitability and being dismissive to some of the community concerns in some of the meetings. Sounds like it would have been a yes, except that maybe had some concerns stylistically with, with the team. Could you tell me how the community meetings went?
So, I saw that comment, and I, full disclosure, was not the one who presented a planning commission. I watched the meeting. I had trouble understanding the, why the comment was made. And I also was not personally at the community meeting. My colleague was. What I can say is that this applicant, and you've seen it here tonight, has been responsive to the concerns that have been raised, and has added commitments to the development plan based on whatever, you know, items that were raised by planning Commissioners, items that were raised by the neighbors, and even tonight, items that were raised by some of your council colleagues as well. I wouldn't describe that as being dismissive, and I think that this project has improved over time through the process, which I think is kind of what the process is supposed to do.
Well, thanks for that. And, and I look for, in the Planning Commissioner comments, comments that are actionable. Sometimes they're editorial. If, if somebody writes, "I think they should do this," I mean, I, I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how to translate that into action, or if they have an opinion on how something should, should just be. Sometimes it, sometimes it seems like some of the comments present as if the UDO just simply doesn't exist. Like, some of the things that, that are asked for are already statutorily gonna happen, have to happen. We're not gonna allow developers just to, you know, build whatever the heck you want, rush out over the law. Hope you're not gonna try that. So, so the comment, it was, it was a 7-6 vote. As I said, one of the comments, one of the Commissioners seemed to be hinging on yes, and as I dug down into their comments to see what was actionable, yeah, I didn't really see anything that, that ran afoul of the comprehensive plan, or anything that was, you know, statutorily not permissible. What I do see is detention of what it looks like to develop within our urban footprint, and what a growing city looks like. Another example, I, I lived, talking about older established communities with apartment complexes and using their narrow streets. There's an apartment complex, before I was a homeowner in Durham, I lived at Park Ridge Estates off of 54, that abuts Woodcroft, very old established community, those houses back there. You can exit on the 54, and on the days when the traffic was bad, I'd cut through the, the other exit into this established neighborhood with narrow streets to get out of it. So that exists within our urban footprint. That, that's what detention of a growing city. I, I don't, and I, and I take very seriously when, when residents come and, and listen to them very carefully. And I, I guess my, my struggle is, is I, ultimately, how do we insulate neighborhoods within our urban tier from the effects of urbanization? I couldn't do it from my own neighborhood. I don't know how to do that. There is no neighborhood in this city that is not feeling the effects, or, or will be insulated. Some are more well-organized than others, some are wealthier than others, some may have more influence, and they may be able to stem the inevitable for some time. But, we're a city. There are people moving here at, at an incredible clip. We do need housing everywhere. And, and I heard a comment about, you know, what's interesting is that affordable housing does not mean that these people don't drive. And I think there's been a conflation of affordable housing with just poor folk who always take, there are plenty of folk who live in subsidized situations affordable, who also drive. And our, our value, our, our goal as a city has been, has been to put affordable housing everywhere, not just where there's transit corridor. And when we have done that, on the most expensive real estate downtown, you gotta put serious subsidies downtown as a city, which we've done. So, so we want affordable units everywhere. And if, if there's gonna be retail there, I don't, who knows what the market will put there. But whatever is there, you know, a smart business person will, will look at who lives there, what they need, and will exploit that retail space accordingly, or they'll be out of business. So I'm glad about the ability. I, you know, I, I like Ninth Street. I like how folk who live on Ninth Street can come down and go to shops or whatever, all types of sundry businesses walk to them. So I'm, I'm glad that the retail space is, is, is part of this project. I think the Planning Commissioner had it almost right, and by my reckoning, one of the Commissioners actually would have been a yes, were it not for you guys being so mean, or, or not, not stylistic enough. So I'm gonna be supporting the project. I do take serious, and I thank Councilmember Baker for pressing on, on some of the, the building, the LED and, and architectural things that comport with best practices in terms of energy use and things. I am very appreciative of that. But I think the, in reading through the Commissioners's comments, I thought, I think that they had it mainly right. All of our neighborhood are being impacted, including mine. And I'm the mayor for Tim in the city, and I couldn't stop it. And my, not that I was trying to in my neighborhood, but, yeah, this is what urbanization looks like. And those would be my comments and questions, Mr. Mayor, so I'm done. I won't need another visit. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you. So, I drove the site, I met with the development team, I think, I don't know, Wednesday of last week, and before that, I had the opportunity to drive the site. And it is a weird site. I mean, what neighbors are saying about Spring Street, it's an odd street. It's a small street. And when we, so two things. I guess last year, I think it was last year, when we passed our urban growth boundary, I think folks got really excited, because people kind of said, "Oh, we're gonna, we, we put this kind of flag on the ground around sprawl," right? We don't want our city to sprawl. We want to be very conscious about our, our, our water sources. When you make a decision like that, whatever's on the inside of that line, you have to build up, or your house prices go up even har, even worse than what they are right now. And so I think that that was a, a part of a trade-off in a way, that maybe residents didn't quite understand when we made that decision about an urban growth boundary. So anything on the inside of that urban growth boundary is going to densify at some point. Everything. Even places like Duke Park and Trinity Park, I know the horror. People are going to buy those houses, and they're going to tear them down in the next 20 to 50 years, and they're going to build up. And that's gonna make a lot of people sad, and it's gonna make a lot of people upset. But that is what happens. You don't see mansions, you don't see gajillionaire mansions on Fifth Avenue, like you did. I, what was the show, the, the, like, oh, it was on HBO, it was really Gilded Age. You do not live in the Gilded Age. You do not live in the Gilded Age. We are not, the Vanderbilts do not own, you know, mansions on Fifth Avenue. Everything along Central Park, urbanized, because that is what happened to New York as population increases. And that's what's going to, we're not going to be New York, but that's certainly what's going to happen in Durham in the next 20, 30, 50 years. And I understand a lot of folks don't like that. I understand that that is not maybe what folks envisioned when they either moved to Durham or they grew up here. But that is the reality of the situation when you live in a state that has the third fastest-growing population. And it's not just going to be Durham, it's all of North Carolina. And that is just a hard reality. And I don't, as an elected person on this board, I don't see the point in not being transparent about that with residents. I'd rather everyone, we do it as best as we can, we do it as the least harmful way we possibly can, which is why we have really stringent environmental codes, as much as everyone says we don't. We have some of the most stringent in the state. We have passed a very progressive and good comprehensive plan that is going to push us to this idea of a 15-minute city, which is why you have a requirement here to have a little bit of something besides residential, to start imagining that world where you can walk to the coffee shop down the street from your house. If you take Pleasant and you connect to Andrew and you see that there's a bus on Andrew, you can already start to see what the city's going to have to do around, and that's on us, right? That's building sidewalks, making sure our bus transport, transportation is better. You can already see why somebody would potentially want to live in one of these apartments. You can get to downtown pretty quickly on a back road up the way. You can imagine a space and a time where you could get an e-bike when we do the infrastructure correctly to connect you to downtown, to connect you to other places. Are we there now? No. But if we continue to build single-family homes, we are never going to be there. That is not a possible, that is not what we can see in our future. So we are in a hard place imagining that world, and it sucks. I'm just going to say, if you're the neighbors right around there, I understand it doesn't feel good. I grew up in Charlotte, I watched all the farmland get swallowed up, all the forced annexations by municipalities. You didn't have a choice, you just got a letter in your mail that said you were on city water, and you got trash, and then you had to pay a lot more taxes. But that wasn't necessarily a choice you made. And so I will be supporting this. I will say that I appreciate that this developer, and this is a difference, they hold on to their properties for longer, they don't just build it and then sell it, and I think that that makes for a better neighbor. I think that does actually matter for the neighbors that are already there. I also, you know, if I were soon out of college or in my early 30s, I would live in one of those apartments. You don't have to mow your yard, you can just be. Kind of seems pretty amazing. And I know the rents, I know you guys can't 100% guarantee the rents, but, you know, a person with a roommate is going to have a rent of about $975, maybe $1,000, and then you're going to have your utilities, and that's pretty good for Durham. Is it great? No. But that is, a lot of people can afford that rent. And that means that we don't have to use government dollars to subsidize that rent. That means that the market's providing that. That means we can take our dollars, which we do, the city of Durham and residents, we have probably the most aggressive affordable housing policies in the state. We can take those collective dollars that I was talking about earlier and put them to the Willard Streets and to the other affordable housing communities that we are building. And so I will be supporting it, especially because I know I can do this and get these extra things, or it's going to be a by-right 214-apartment unit development. So those are the, that's the reality of what we're dealing with here. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone's comments on this. I think that this project has a lot of really good pieces to it. Like some of my colleagues have stated, we are looking for residential density inside the city. This is something that I've been looking to see, and we want it with accessibility to transit. I am aware that not everyone takes public transit, but if we can encourage folks to take public transit and actually allow them the walkability to those public transit options, that is a huge part of meeting affordability in housing, right? Because we also have to have good transit, and we have lots of goals as this city to lower our emissions, and this is one of the ways that we can do that, right? The other piece of this that I like is the setting aside of non-residential. We've talked a lot about these urban sprawl communities that are just housing, blocks and blocks and blocks of housing with no accessibility to any amenities. However, I am also really concerned about a few things with this project, one of which is that one small part of non-residential is going to be the only walkable thing. There is nothing else walkable. There was some comment about that Fox Crossing 1 had advertised itself as a walkable development. I looked today, and that wording has been changed, which I found interesting, which might have happened after the planning commission, but there is really nothing else walkable there. And saying that folks can walk on these streets, I think is problematic. So that's one concern that I have. Another concern, and a really, really big concern, is the roads. Spring Street, yeah, I mean, the Spring Street is a country road, it is very small, and I know that only 20% per the, per the traffic analysis is going to be on that street, but that's still a lot of extra traffic on that street. And then we've got also a lot of extra traffic on Lynn, which is slightly more developed than Spring, but not like huge. And so I'm concerned about that. That is something that's concerning to me. The by-right build here would have a far less impact on those roads, and so that, I think, is something to think about. I'm also concerned about Lake Creek. I don't have to rehash this a million times, but that creek looks terrible, and it's going right into Falls Lake, which is the drinking water for Wake County. And I do think, as good neighbors, that we do have a responsibility to be considering that impact. And then the last thing is the deforestation of this area. And we heard from a couple of community members tonight about the crossing under Highway 70. And like my colleagues have said, like, part of our responsibility up here is to think about holistically what makes sense. And we have a lot to weigh, I think, in this project. I want to thank the folks who came out to speak tonight, and particularly the folks who went through their neighborhoods and talked to their neighbors, signed a petition and sent it to us. I thought that that was really great community engagement. I'm really impressed with y'all for organizing in that way. We've heard a lot tonight about not being on track with our housing, but we are actually on track with developing enough housing for the, to meet the population growth that's been projected. We're not on track with Vision Zero. This is our pedestrian and biking safety. And this project directly contravenes that, in my opinion. This is, it's not going to be a safe place. I'm not sure how you could look at that street and think that any additional cars on that street would be safe. It failed at the planning commission. It, in fact, failed at the planning commission 7 to 4 for the voting members. There were two non-voting members, and so they were counted as yeses. But I watched the whole planning commission meeting, and I think that there were tons of concerns by almost all of the commissioners. Even the folks who ended up voting yes had a lot of concerns and noted those in our, in our notes that we received back. And the last thing is that it, by percentage, gets a D on our comprehensive plan policies. It meets 13, it fails at 9. This has been something that we've used in the past as sort of a guiding light. So, yeah, I, it's, I'm conflicted. A lot of good things about this project, but a lot of things that I think are really problematic. But again, I just want to thank the neighbors for coming out and echo what my colleague has stated, that change is difficult, and we are going to have to make changes within the city of Durham. That is going to happen. And I understand that not everyone will be okay with those changes. But we also need to sit here and think about what the best use of our land is, and I'm not sure if this is it. Still conflicted about it. Thank you.
I share with a lot of the sentiment of Councilmember Cook, there is the commitment to the 5% of units for 80% area median income below, housing, one housing type, and then the 2,000 to 7,000 square feet of commercial, which is not as much as we like to see for a set of this size, but it's also an awkward site. And so I think that that is a reasonable amount, and it's good to see that there. We are growing, we are changing, we are urbanizing, and as we do that, there is this inherent conflict that we see with residents, particularly when we see development that's occurring directly adjacent to residents, upstream from residents, close to where people are living and have been living for a very long time. And so I think that as we grow in those areas, it's very important that we manage the process of growth, that we manage the outcome of that development in order to alleviate some of the concerns. There's always going to be people that show up to these meetings, especially if they live next to a rezoning case, that speak out against the rezoning case. People don't always like to see change. But I think that there are also things that we can put in place that ensure that there are better outcomes for those residents. I think that there are ways that we can win over residents to some of the changes that occur in their neighborhoods. And that is one of the reasons why I keep pushing for us to adopt requirements for parkland. I've worked in a city as a city planner in the past that would have required an acre and a half of public parkland in a development like this. Imagine if we could go to the residents that live adjacent to where this proposal is and say, hey, look, you're also going to get a park out of this. You're going to get a public park with a whole lot more amenities. You know, when we urbanize, we also need to bring good along with some of the impacts that are negative, or at least even perceived as negative. So we need to manage the process of change, we need to manage the outcome of change. It was interesting, one of the residents earlier pointed to, showed a picture of traffic and talked about a cut-through. And I think that that speaks to the importance of street connectivity, because cut-throughs are really just street connections where we don't have sufficient street connectivity. And in the past, we have not, we have allowed development to occur without adequate connectivity, and that results in a lot of traffic filtered onto fewer and fewer roads. And so that is why, that's why I always ask about connectivity and the importance of additional connections. Again, you know, we talk about walkability, we talk about urbanizing, it's that density, diversity, and design, the three Ds of walkability. We're achieving density here. We're even moderately achieving diversity, diversity of uses. And that brings us to the third item of design. You know, will we one day be able to, will residents in the future potentially, if this rezoning goes through and this development occurs, be able to walk places, access transit? You know, in a lot of ways, even if we are building density, even if we are adding a mix of uses, the design is, may not be amenable to promoting walkability. And so I think that we can, it is possible, and I think that we frequently and consistently see developments that verticalize auto-centric development. And I think that that's what we would likely anticipate from most of the rezoning cases that we see that involve multifamily. So we are in the process of rewriting the Unified Development Ordinance, or at the very beginning of that process, a lot of the things that we could simply be requiring, we don't currently require, and we're going to have to wait until that UDO process goes through in order to require some of these things. And so that means that we need to, up at the dais, this is where we have the opportunity to receive out of the goodness of applicants' hearts contributions that potentially in the future will simply be standards, will simply be requirements. But that puts us in an awkward position every single time. It means that we have to ask a lot of questions that we won't always need to ask, because they'll just be built into the DNA, into the Unified Development Ordinance. Stream buffers, that's another one, that's another one of these policies in the comprehensive plan that is determined to not be consistent with the comprehensive plan. In fact, it's not even halfway consistent with the comprehensive plan. So Councilmember Cook pointed out that a number of policies in the Unified Development Ordinance are not, are not being addressed by this rezoning case. And I don't think that we need to be purists and require or, you know, expect developers to follow every single policy, at least not until we require the ones that we are allowed to require. But it does mean that we need to make a judgment call. And so I have the same heartburn and the same concerns that Councilmember Cook expressed on this case. Thank you.
Yeah, sure, go ahead. Councilmember Baker, thank you so much. You extracted some pretty, I think, some pretty significant concessions from the developer. Reading the green, is that an indication that you, did they not cross the threshold for, to ease the heartburn? I guess, if that makes sense, the question makes sense? Brilliant. And some of the things that you got from the developer, I guess the question is, to what end was that?
Reading the room, understanding that this might, this might pass today. And if it passes, then I want to make sure that it's as good as possible.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to appreciate the residents who've come out tonight. You've all waited a long time for this item to be heard, you've been here till the end, so I really appreciate that. You gave us appreciation for the work we do, and we want to appreciate you for being here and representing your community. Admittedly, this is a complicated case, and infrastructure in this neighborhood is imperfect, especially on Spring Street. At the same time, I'm mindful, as others have said on the council, that our placetime map calls for a mixed-use neighborhood here, right? And that's not a, that means a more intensive, intensive uses, you know, and that, that mixed-use neighborhood could be, as others have said, could be what, 214, 217 units by right, right? With no promised affordability and no, and no non-residential uses. So I appreciate the developers' offer of a mix of uses. We've looked at many cases recently where the placetime map has said mixed-use neighborhood or mixed residential neighborhood, and then we don't get the mix of uses, and developers say, well, it's nearby or adjacent. So I appreciate the fact that actually this is a mixed-use concept that we need to move towards. I appreciate the profit of affordable housing, which we need desperately. And I will point out that, I don't think, I don't know if y'all saw the article in the NNO last week, our rental rates in the Triangle have actually gone down slightly in the last year. It's exactly what we wanted, we need affordable housing in the campaign. This is one of the top two issues we heard from folks day after day. And so the fact that we've been building more housing has addressed this issue, and so we're seeing rents come down, which is what we want. But there's not a magic number there, and we need to keep building to address the need for housing. I want to associate myself with Mayor Protem's comments. This is a development that doesn't add to the urban growth boundary, right? We're, this is urban development, and while it is imperfect, this is less than half a mile from transit stops, both on Pleasant as well as Andrew. It's not a great connection, it's not easily walkable or bikeable, but this is near transit, and it's not the case with many of our recent developments. They've not been near transit, and so we're sort of left with like, well, it's maybe this, that, but it's just not close to transit, right? So as my colleague, Councilmember Cabir, said, it's on us to like bring that infrastructure, right? If we approve this. So this is not easy, it's complicated, but on balance, I will be supporting this project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just in fairness, transparency, I can't see my way to supporting this project. I'm very concerned. I will note that mainly my concerns wage- I will note that mainly my concerns wage heavily, weigh heavily around Ms. Waiters' comments around the treatment she's received in this process. And I can't find a way around some of the comments that have been made by some of the residents. And I just, in general, don't make excuses for not supporting what I don't see as a community benefit. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Colleagues, any other comments? All right. So if you left this neighborhood and went up Lynn across 70, turn right on Ivorywood Lane, turn left on St. John, go into that little parking lot, the townhome straight ahead, 428 St. John, it's where I lived for years. So I was some of y'all's neighbor. I don't know, you know, if it's because I, and staff, I do, I will get those commitments. Yep. I, I don't know. I, Spring Street is, is one, but considering I used to live over here all the time, I mean, all of the streets need, they just, they need better, they need enhancements, all of them. And I think for me, what I keep, what I keep battling with is, you know, community is not built by a puzzle piece, it's built by puzzle pieces. And I feel sometimes we're, we're saying no because the one puzzle piece doesn't have the entire puzzle picture in it. And, and, and I think that in order for us to truly have that fully picked, that full picture, we do have to build some of the parts, and it's going to be a challenging, painful process. It is, it is uncomfortable. I don't sit well with, you know, as a matter of fact, you know, it was raining one day right on Spring Street, and I was learning how to ride a motorcycle. And actually, I almost got hit because I couldn't get it in gear and someone wasn't paying attention. I've had some adventures in this part of these neck of the woods. So I am concerned about the streets, but, but I also, I look at it holistically, and I feel, I feel as though we're, we're battling with competing interests and competing goals. I, I, you know, when we talk about walkability, when we talk about connectivity, if it doesn't have all of these things, it's not a 15-minute city yet, like I, saying no because it doesn't have the things that we want only prevents us from getting the things that we're trying to build too. And that goes, that's, that goes back to just the puzzle pieces working together. There, I'm glad to see that there's going to be some commercial over there other than the gas station further down the street. 885 is there because for a long time, 70, you know, was just a nightmare, you know? And then folks are going through downtown to get from 85 to 147, you know? And after a while, once that traffic is putting so much pressure, you know, the government is forced to come up with a solution. But I can't find anywhere in the world where they're just, they, unless they have the resources and the wealth and an actual Department of Transportation that will just proactively do it, I, I don't know where it's common where they build a lot of things that would be nice and hopefully folks will come to it. So unfortunately, yes, traffic gets a little backed up certain times of the day on Angier. People, if 70 is pretty rough, I'm guilty of this, if 70 is rough, then I'll turn on Lynn and cut through to get the Angier, to go straight down parallel to 70, to get further down, sometimes a little quicker. It's just, it is a natural behavior, you know? But there are a lot of things that I like about this. There are some things I'm really concerned about. I am really concerned about the higher use of traffic on those small streets. But I'm also concerned about that, the same way I'm concerned about the school buses that are turning on Lynn Road from, I don't think it's Spring, but it's further, it's the next one up from Spring, you know? And, and they always almost turn in the ditch there, you know? And I've driven school buses through there when I was the band director at Southern. I can still, I have my bus license. So I, I've had a lot of experiences over here when I was, when I was the neighbor. I want to be careful when I say this. I, I don't, if, if a resident is coming and expressing their concern and they feel disrespected by a professional, then that is a problem. Now, I, I, but that's a problem I want to address for that person, whoever that professional was. I, I want to be careful about making decisions around behavior. I, I don't like it, trust me. We have some examples of our gubernatorial candidates and presidential candidates, but I want to make sure that we do address that. At least as, as far as I'm mayor, I will address that personally, you know? I, we're not having that type of behavior, not from the professionals that are coming in here, you know, just being dismissive. So I apologize about that happening. But I do try to be as objective as possible. So I, I am going to support it with, with, with my reluctance around, around just the street capacity. And I, as these units are coming, I hope that we could eventually get the, get some of those roads in that neighborhood to be expanded or just, you know, just really enhanced. There's, it's very residential over there, and I think that we could, we, we're now prime for truly building community over there. We really are. It may not happen tomorrow, but I, I think that we're, we're building, it may be a painful process, but I think we're building where we ultimately want to get over there. So I will, at this time, I need to, yeah, I need to have staff come back up. Aaron with the PA voice. And Aaron, it sounds really good. That's why I'm, I'm teasing you. It sounds really good.
Thank you. Yeah, so Neil, just to go through the five additional commitments that I have noted, there's a commitment to doing storm, stormwater ponds to a 100-year event. Is that correct?
Correct.
Increasing the affordability period from 20 years to 30 years.
That's also correct.
That all planted trees will be of native species per the Durham Landscape Manual.
Yeah, we're allowed by Durham, yep.
That all buildings will be to Energy Star certification.
All primary.
All primary buildings?
Yep.
Okay.
And I, I, primary residential buildings.
Primary residential.
Yeah.
And high visitability crosswalks will be included, subject to approval by transportation staff at the site plan stage.
Yes. And then we also had some prohibited uses.
Yes, but I think though.
Oh, is that, is that already on there?
I think that's, or, no, that's not already in there? Okay, so.
So the prohibited uses, clubs and lodges, wireless communication facility, drive.
I have, I, it's the ones that you listed in the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got, I've got your presentation, so.
Okay, yeah.
We'll work off that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility, utility extension agreement with Burnham SE Acquisitions LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Now, our clickers are not working, so we will have to vote by hand. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, please raise your right hand. You got that, Madam Clark? All right, thank you. Could you report that for the record?
Mr. Mayor, the vote was four to three with Mayor Protem, Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem, Middleton, Councilmember Caballero, and Councilmember Rist voting in favor, and Councilmember Baker, Cook, and Freeman voting against the item.
And motion two to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of Residential Urban 5 Falls Jordan Lake Watershed Protection District B and establishing the same as planned Development Residential 12.750 Falls Jordan Lake Watershed Protection District.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed?
Mr. Mayor, the vote is, it passes six to one with Councilmember Freeman voting no.
Thank you. And motion three, to adopt a consistency statement as required by North Carolina General Statute 160D-605.
Who to adopt consistency?
It's been moved and properly seconded. My brain is not working. I have a little moment. All in favor, please, I'm so sorry. All in favor, please raise your right hand. It's the consistency statement unanimous.
That passes seven to zero.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Mayor. Could we, could we actually, could we, could we go back through? I, I think that I misheard what we were voting on. Could you, could you just tell me the first and second? Because we're not annexing. The first and second motion, could you distinguish those two for me?
You, you're asking, are you asking what the motions were?
Yes.
Okay. Like you want me to read it or you want me to explain it?
If you could just hold that open for one second, I can read it. I just want to make sure that I, I might have misvoted.
Why are you doing that? Mr. Kane, Aaron, I, I wasn't calling your voice a zoning code, by the way. I was saying it sounds really good, like your voice is really clear in the mic.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Before we move forward, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to just get staff's response. I, I wasn't sure because I heard Councilmember Cook mention that there was a seven, four vote, and in the report it says seven, six.
Because two individuals were not present.
Okay. And I just want to make sure that in the report for the background that that's clear, clearly labeled. I do note that the one person who wasn't there that was counted as a yes for the four is, so it's, it's really tricky that it's so, it shows seven, six when it's really like seven, three.
Were they, were they present and then left?
They were, that's correct. They were, two people who were present for the beginning of the meeting but had left by the time the vote was taken, and by rules of procedure, they are counted as yes votes.
But they would be counted as yes votes.
But it wouldn't be seven, six.
It would be seven, six.
That, that's what made it seven, six. It would have been seven, I mean, we don't know what those two people would have voted, but there were four yes votes of people who were there. And then the two people who weren't there are counted as yes to make it six.
Right. If you attend a meeting and you leave before the vote, then you are considered.
Just for clarification, and I, this is my misread, but generally when there's not an annex, I, I was assuming that the, that the, sorry, that the zoning change was going to be the first motion, and I didn't realize the utility extension agreement was going to be the first motion. I would like to reopen that vote if possible. I know that it's late, but I just want it to be accurate.
Are you wishing to change your vote?
I am.
So Madam Clark, can you just record that? Oh, wait, do we have to?
Mr. Mayor, is this motion for the, the utility extension agreement or for the ordinance amending the UDO?
I'm asking for the second motion to be reopened.
Okay.
So do I need a, do I need to?
Do you want me to make the motion?
Let me, let me do this. If you don't mind, since you are the one that's initiated, would you make a, I'll entertain a motion to recall the vote.
Yes, so moved. To recall the vote on motion two, which is to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of Residential Urban 5 Falls Jordan Lake Watershed Protection District B and establishing the same as planned Development Residential 12.750 Falls Jordan Lake Watershed Protection District B.
Point of inquiry, is this going to change the outcome of the vote? All right. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Just a motion to.
This is a motion to recall motion two.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, please show by raising your right hand. All right. So did you get that?
Mr. Mayor, was that five to two?
It's six to, six, six to one.
Six, one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So now, motion two has been recalled. We will now, I'll now entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of Residential Urban 5 Falls Jordan Lake Watershed Protection District B and establishing the same as planned Development Residential 12.750 Falls Jordan Lake Watershed Protection District B.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please show by raising your right hand. All right, all opposed? All right.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the, the motion passed four to three with councilmembers Baker, Cook, and Freeman voting no.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that late night correction. Appreciate it.
Yep, and last item, number twenty, number twenty-four. Marvin, Marvin Williams, I, I heard that you had auctioneer experience, so you can speak fast.
Yes, I can. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Williams, Mayor Protem Middleton, Members of Council, Marvin Williams with the Department of Public Works.
Could you turn that mic closer to you?
Sure. This item proposes to raise stormwater rates for fiscal year 2025 effective July 1st, 2024. The public hearing was notified in accordance with state and local requirements. The proposed monthly increase for residential customers would be 75 cents for Tier One residential customers at a proposed rate of $5.70 per month, $1.55 for Tier Two residential customers at a proposed rate of $11.80 per month, and $3.11 for Tier Three residential customers at a proposed rate of $23.64 per month. The proposed monthly increase for other residential and non-residential customers is $1.55 per 2,400 square feet of impervious surface area at a rate of $11.80 per month. There are two motions that the administration recommends that the city council approve. The first, conduct a public hearing to receive public comment on the proposed fiscal year 2025 stormwater rates. And the second is to adopt an ordinance to change the fee schedule revising stormwater rates effective on July 1st, 2024.
All right, thank you for that report. I will now declare this hearing open. Are there any comments? With the exception of Councilmember Cook, is there any? I'm just TV. All right, I will, if there are no comments, I'll now declare this public hearing closed. All right, this is back before the council colleagues. So are there any comments? Councilmember Freeman?
Okay, I just wanted to check in and make sure the general public was aware, and it's probably directed for the city manager. The fund that is available for folks who cannot afford their water bill is named X, and I can't think of it right now.
So this is the, you know, this is the stormwater rates, and the fund is really for the water and sewer utility service. And it is a, it is a fund that is administered by Water Management Department to assist residents that make application and have a need to have their water bill supplemented. But this is a stormwater fee.
So it would not apply for the stormwater fee?
It, it is currently not, you know, it's currently not part, there's currently not a program for the stormwater that is similar to the one. a program for the stormwater that is similar to the one that you're recalling.
Thank you. And I just wanted to just note that for my colleagues, that there is no plan in place or fund in place that covers that. And so just noting we're in a recession, and folks are experiencing high rental rates or homeownership costs. And so maybe a point, at some point in time, we need to look at what it would look like to support folks who might not be able to cover that as well, because the stormwater fees are assessed and, on an annual basis, and it can create some hardship around that affordable housing. Thank you.
Are you saying the increased fees for hardship?
So whenever the, the storm, whenever the water rates increase, I'm assuming that the water fund increases as well. But it would be great to figure out whether there's something in place for stormwater or yard waste. Like, all of the things that we have in place to assess fees to our residents, as we increase the rate and it becomes prohibitive to folks, we don't want them to be pushed out. So I just want to make sure we create an on-ramp to cover that.
All right. And just to be clear, this is, we're talking like raising it like a dollar and?
Seventy-five cents.
A dollar and seventy-five cents, okay. So raising it seventy-five cents a month?
Yes.
Okay. I, that's awesome. All right. Yes.
I know, it's a joke. It's just one quick thing that I want to say. We talked about this in the work plan session, and I just want to reiterate a concern that I have about this, which is that the larger apartment complexes are going to be rated at a different tier than our residential due to the definitions. This is not a critique, just a statement that I'm making, because that cost does get passed down to the tenants. And so it's just something that I want folks to be aware of, that when we look at these tiers, that's not necessarily, it doesn't necessarily take into account the incomes of the folks that are affected, right? Like, it's not going to be proportional all the time, because large apartment complexes and HOAs and other things are, are grouped into the non-residential, and they get raised at a different rate. That's all, I just want to alert everyone that that is going down, and that those costs do end up getting passed down to tenants. And so that is just a concern that I want to raise. And I will be done for the night.
Sorry, and it's late, late 11:50. I just want to, I do want to make an economic argument here, in that we can assume those costs will be passed down, but the, the ability of, whether it's landlords in an apartment complex or a house, their ability to pass on, whether it's property taxes or water and sewer costs, really does relate to the dynamics of that market. If it's an elastic market and demand, like, and people can't go elsewhere, it probably get passed on. If it's an elastic market and someone could move, it may get passed on partially, or, so it's, so it's not, I think there's a, empirically, I think there's a, there's a, there's a, it's knowable, right? But we can't assume the 100% will always be passed on, is what I'm saying. But like, in, in most cases, it probably is some, some share that passed on, but just from an economics perspective, I think we can't know that without actually modeling the dynamics of supply and demand in that marketplace.
This was, this was me being, having a, having seen that being passed on. It is written into most residential leases, and it does get passed on. So, but I understand your argument.
Yes.
And I was just gonna just add, tack, tack on to that, in that I think that this is an, also an opportunity for conversations when we're talking to affordable housing developers, or housing developers in general. Maybe the tiering could have some caveat where if you are offering 10% affordable housing, that that's an option, that you're in a different tier. So just for future conversations. Thank you.
All right. I, and I, staff, I'm going to reach out afterward. I just want to make sure we're talking about, you know, an additional dollar and 50 cents a month or 75 cents a month, or is that like a percentage, or is it like our taxes, a penny equals?
No, Tier One, 75 cents per month, Tier Two, a dollar and 55 cents per month, Tier Three, $3.11 per month.
Okay. All right.
Think down here, just to note, your comment would probably be helpful.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, colleagues, are we good? All right. All right. I will now declare this public hearing closed and back before the council. Staff, thank you. I will now. Really need glasses. Oh, there it is. To, I'll now entertain a motion to adopt, adopt an ordinance to amend the fee schedule revising the stormwater rates to become effective July 1, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, it is unanimous. All right, is anyone interested in redoing this entire agenda again? All right. It's 11:53 PM. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Go hug a teacher. That is it. We are adjourned.
Tomorrow. Seven minutes till tomorrow. Seven minutes till tomorrow.